Okay. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and posted on the municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the Planning Board Secretary. Fire exits are located on the eastern and west sides of the council chambers as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anybody with a cellphone or other device to kindly put in a silent mode for the duration of the meeting. This meeting is being recorded by the Asbury Park Press, I mean, I'm sorry, Asbury Park TV, TV, sorry. And I just ask for everyone's cooperation here. We have an extremely packed schedule today, so we will be moving things along as best we can. We're going to be having a three-minute-per-person limitation on comments. And please just, let's be concise in what we're asking for. And comments, please. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
November 26, 2018, 7:00 PM, Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Here.
Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Sauer Ann Towery.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Trudy Syfak.
Here.
Tony Corrello.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Rick Lambert.
Here.
Barbara Krizak.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
The agenda remains as said, it was just last, actually, it was just published not that long ago, so there were some minor changes. But we're going to be doing a review, first of all, a board review of the adoption of an amendment to the municipal master plan to include municipal public access plan. We're going to do a review on the adoption of an amendment to the municipal master plan for affordable housing. We have some old business for 208 Main Street, and we have some old business for Interfaith on Springwood Avenue. We have four applications, one application, the first application, which is 725 Madison. We will be voting to carry that to December 10. We have an application for Eugene M. Matthews on Washington Avenue. We have an application for ABG Liquor Holdings, ABG Establishment LLC, and we have one for the Lutz Entertainment LLC. Like I said, we have a very full agenda, so let's be clear and concise, and let's get started. We have the review of the adaptation of the amendment for the municipal master plan for the municipal public access. Is this something that we have to, Barbara, is this something that we have to just vote on the resolution, or, because I saw that we already, we already went through this.
Yes, the board already discussed this, and you already had the presentation, but because it wasn't properly noticed at the time, you couldn't take formal action.
Okay.
Do you have the notices in all right?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Let's have that, Michelle have all those marked in, and along with your affidavit of nailing of the notices in the light.
Okay, so that the notices were sent out appropriately. I'm going to ask if the public has any comment on that before the board, would we do, would we do the resolution now, Jack, or later?
Yeah, well, once these are marked into evidence, as B1 and whatever, consecutively through, and the actual plan itself, or the amendment itself, has that been marked?
Not yet.
So let's mark that.
No, no, that's the other one.
Any public comment? Okay.
Yeah, I move that we adopt the amendment to the municipal master plan for the municipal public access plan.
I second that.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Yes.
Mayor John Moore.
Was I here to kind of vote?
Yes, yes.
Yes, you were.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Tony Corrello.
Yes.
Trudy Syfak.
I don't think I was here.
I don't think you were here.
September 24, she was.
Was she? Okay. Trudy Syfak.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
Barbara Krizak.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Okay. Let's move on to item number two under board review for the affordable housing element.
Let's get the exhibits marked, same as the previous one, and all the notices you gave it. The copy of the plan itself marked in evidence. And then swearing.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear a firm testimony during these proceedings? Please state your full name, who you represent. Please state your affiliation with the city.
I'm the McNamara, CM, and Wes, I'm the consulting planner for affordable housing purposes.
Michael Kapabianco, C.A.P.A.B.I.A.N.C.O., I'm the city manager.
Okay.
Do I have your original report, R.C.1? Can you see it right there? Am I?
Can I give it after the?
Yeah, sure. Just mark it for now. You can work up if it's right here.
Yep, I'm sorry, what was, did you want to mark this?
Make it C1.
Just do it. Yes.
I'll use mine.
Yeah, okay.
Great.
It's disgustingly hot here.
Let's talk to the city manager about that.
Yep.
Someone should teach me how to use the thermostat. I don't know which one it is.
We actually put the XZ on, so this is.
That doesn't work either.
Yes, I know.
And we're, are we submitting this as two?
Yes, that's B2.
Okay.
B1 of the public notice is B2 of the actual plan.
Okay. All right. Are we okay, Jack?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right.
I'm sorry, you wanted, you want, sorry.
Yeah, that wasn't the actual plan.
Just listen to the presentation.
It should be B3 or what.
P3 or?
Yeah.
It's a handout.
It's a handout, okay, it's a handout. Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Why don't we swear in the staff, just in case?
Absolutely. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear a firm testimony during these proceedings? Who gives the truth, the whole truth, and that can give the truth?
Yes.
State your names and your affiliation with the city.
Michael Sullivan, R.C. Hints, Planning Board Director. Douglas Clowland, Inside Engineering, Board Engineer.
Thank you.
Ready? Thank you for having us tonight. Beth and I are going to give a two-pronged attack of affordable housing. About two years ago, the mayor and council issued a request for proposals for furthering affordable housing within the city of Asbury Park. As more and more developers come in, as there's more speculator, speculators coming in purchasing properties, one of the things that the governing body was, is hoping to keep is the character of the neighborhoods. The people who've been here deserve to be here as things get better. One of the ways to do that is to further affordable housing. The city is exempt under first and second round, and third round housing rules as an urban agency municipality, so these plans don't actually have to be done. The city is being one of the leaders, we think, in this field, has been emulated by several other municipalities who are also exempt and are now also doing their own affordable housing planning document. This is a planning document, obviously, that's why we're here tonight. This document that you've had is a 30,000-foot, you're the chef's making this, the meat and potatoes is going to be, thank you, at the ordinance level. So this is a planning document of an ideas of how to get things done. As we move forward, every redevelopment plan, the zoning ordinances, are going to have to be amended following the proper amendment procedure in order to get, you know, to further the affordable housing goals. It's important to note that the city does not build affordable housing. I'm saying that just for you and for the audience watching on TV. We hear that a lot. Why isn't the city doing more? We don't build. We either partner with, with organizations that do it, or we sell the land that we own, which we don't own anything of substance, substance any more than one property, which is still going through some legal issues. We don't build. This ordinance will then allow for the furtherance of affordable housing. One of the things that you'll hear Beth get into is that we just can't dictate to a developer to build. There has to be some sort of benefit, whether it's increased height, whether it's reduction in parking, whether it's a pilot with a long-term tax exemption. There is, for lack of a better phrase, a tit-for-tat of having to move forward with affordable housing. Currently, before the council is the developer's fee ordinance, which the city has never regulated. We're waiting for Superior Court permission to adopt that so we can start collecting fees, which go into a dedicated trust account to further affordable housing. And that money will be part of a spending plan, which Beth will briefly touch upon tonight. So we're going to try to keep this short, about 10 to 15 minutes. I'm going to turn it over to Beth in a second, but again, this is the larger plan of a plan in order to get to the ordinances. Once the planning board adopts this, we then start writing the ordinances. Some of them are going to be larger in scale, where we'll, we'll have to outsource and go through a competitive process. Some will be able to do in-house with our certified planner on staff. But this is going to be the city council and staff working closely with the planning board to further to implement this plan. And we're hopeful that the board adopts this by the end of the year so we can start working on some of the ordinances for early next year. This also creates, from the city council side, another chapter in the city code, which is Chapter 31, dedicated to affordable housing. So that's the seriousness that everyone is taking this, that this is actually getting its own section within the city code. And that will cover inclusionary zoning and a couple other things. But with that, I'll just turn it over to Beth to give some highlights of what the plan calls for.
Just one question before, before we get started. Is there any, is there any timeline required to prove what's being presented?
No.
Legally required?
No. Once you guys adopt, we can start adopting.
Then you can move forward with the ordinances, which we want to do, obviously, as quickly as possible.
Yes, so that's why you've, at this point, there's two schools of thought at this point of the year, is that if you introduce an ordinance, it, ordinances, if, for an introduct, introduce ordinance, it dies at the end of the year unless it gets passed by second reading. Some municipal attorneys will say, if you have the same governing body, you can carry it until January or February. I'm much more conservative with that and say, what is another month in the grand scheme of things? Let's do it right so we stand any challenge. So that's why the timing of this, along with the holidays and conferences that everyone was attending, there's five or six weeks before this can be adopted before the board and we can start working in January on ordinances, or sooner. Some of them, we know, there's cleanup. When you read the plan, we have to clean up some of the language in the spring to have a new plan. That stuff's a no-brainer. We can do that tomorrow, but why do things piecemeal? Let's get it all done at once and do it right.
Okay. All right, Beth. There will be time for a public comment.
Is this speaking to the mic? It's hard to hear. Oh, I thought it was. Is this working?
Now, now it is, when you're, when you're closer, it is.
I'm not repeating all that.
No, no, no. Okay, Beth, speaking to the microphone.
Okay. I hope folks can hear me okay. So thank you very much. As, as Michael said, this is the first step, or one of the early steps in your affordable housing process. This is a master plan element, if, which, if adopted by all of you tonight or at a subsequent meeting, means that this housing element will become another element of your master plan, just like a land use element, circulation element, and so forth. And in fact, this housing element actually builds upon the work that R.C. Hints did with all of you in 2017 in adopting your master plan. If you might recall, there were a number of chapters and topics addressed in that master plan, and one of them was housing. And in there, there were a number of strategies and recommended policies set forth in that master plan that we've taken as part of this process and expanded upon. The next step is the implementation, which I'll go through later, and that is the final detail added to this when you actually adopt those ordinances. So if you might recall, in the, the master plan, I won't go through all of those recommendations, but it spoke generally about the need to utilize inclusionary housing as a vehicle to create affordable housing. And inclusionary housing is, of course, any development that includes a mix of market rate and affordable units. The typical set-asides are between 10% affordable and 20% affordable, and you, and you can see those, those set-asides recommended throughout this plan for different areas. One of the things that Michael alluded to, that I want to touch upon before I get into the recommended strategies, is this concept of where you're utilizing, where you're seeking to promote affordable housing through zoning, that it needs to be done with an incentive in mind, an incentive that can be granted to the developer. And that incentive is referred to in that housing plan as a compensatory benefit. And essentially, what it requires, and this comes back, or rather goes back to early case law in New Jersey, and what it ultimately states is municipalities are not permitted to simply apply an affordable housing set-aside without granting any other type of incentive or compensatory benefit. The most common incentive or benefit is density or other intent, measures of intensity in a development. So it's typically increased number of housing units on a site, or, and/or increased building height. And so we've utilized that compensatory benefit as the vehicle to create and plan for affordable housing throughout the city. Because frankly, otherwise, the other incentives that municipalities or developers are able to utilize are financial incentives, most of the time. It's a significant subsidy from the municipality, or a grant or a loan from some outside agency. But using inclusionary housing will allow this city to, to gain from the market forces already shaping the city and build upon them in order to achieve a public good that you're seeking, which is, of course, expanded opportunities for low and moderate income households that are currently here and that may be here in the future. So with that, I'm going to go through the strategies identified in the housing element, which, as I, as I said, are really applied to specific sites or districts throughout the city. So the first one I want to talk, talk about is the Deal Lake Inclusionary District, and this is an area along, as you might imagine, Deal Lake Drive, so it's in the northeastern section of the city. It's in the area that currently permits multifamily housing.
Page seven of the handout.
Yes, thank you, yeah. For those following around, page seven of the handout. So in this area, the existing zoning permits a mix of multifamily and single-family units with maximum building heights of roughly five stories. What's being proposed in this housing element is to allow for an increase in the building density, increase in building height in this area so that we can achieve an affordable housing set-aside of 15% for low and moderate income households, and additional 5% for middle-income households. So really expanding the range of household incomes that can live in this area, in the city. Excuse me, Beth, do you have an extra one so I can answer that as I'm a bit? I will provide you with mine.
There's one on the table.
Okay, okay. The next area is the Central Business District. Of course, the scenario that I think everybody knows, it's along Cookman, Madison Avenue, a number of streets in the triangular area of the city, that's actually currently subject to an existing redevelopment plan. And so this area permits a mix of uses. This is, of course, an existing mixed-use district. Many of the city's restaurant and entertainment uses have located in this area. And it's got a maximum building height of 45 to 70 feet, depending on which area of the CBD you're in. And given the existing character and the goals of utilizing many of those existing buildings, which have historic value or historic character, the way that this housing element presents opportunity to create affordable housing is to work with a modest height increase of 10 feet, where there's a 10% affordable housing set-aside, and also to reduce the burden upon non-residential developers where they're also providing affordable housing by reducing non-residential parking standards. Next is, again, page eight, in the Business and Neighborhood Commercial Districts. These are ultimately your B districts and your NC districts throughout the city, located along Asbury Avenue, Memorial Drive. This is an existing zone that permits commercial, office, retail uses. It has maximum height of about three stories, and it permits a maximum number of residential units of four, so a maximum of four units regardless of how large the non-residential building is. And so the strategy we've identified in this housing element is to largely loosen the zoning to eliminate that maximum residential density of four units to, to simply be appropriate for the site, and to increase the permitted building heights. Additionally, some of the other recommendations that were set forth in the city's 2017 master plan have also been incorporated into the recommendations in here. So in this plan, we had reviewed the permitted uses for the B and the NC districts, and found that there was an opportunity to upgrade them, to modernize them, really, to allow for more, more typically requested permitted uses, which is, in fact, going to be an incentive for development and redevelopment in the area. And so that, coupled along with the residential density and the building height, will serve as a compensatory benefit such that we'll be able to achieve a 20% set-aside for affordable housing here. Next, page nine of the handout is the Main Street Inclusionary, Main Street Inclusionary District. And this is actually part of the Main Street redevelopment area that exists within the city. It permits, as you may already know, a mix of uses, retail, office, residential uses, and it does so at around three to four stories. And so the strategy identified in, in here is to work within the existing redevelopment plan to.
Excuse me. I understand that you're here.
Okay, I'm sorry, folks, I'll speak up and speak better into the microphone. The strategy for this Main Street Inclusionary area is to adjust the, the permitted uses and adjust the bulk standards to identify places where strategic increases in building height and density would be appropriate, such that we can achieve a greater, achieve a set-aside of affordable housing of about 20%. We are also looking at the Washington Avenue redevelopment area, referred to in here on page nine as the Washington Avenue Inclusionary. And so this, too, is, is an existing redevelopment area in the city. There are a number of residential uses in this area, some of which, some of the residential lots are either vacant homes or perhaps vacant lots. The redevelopment plan calls for a mix of uses at a maximum height of three stories. So mix of uses, including retail, office, as well as, of course, residential. And being cognizant of the permitted height of three stories that already exceeds the heights already found in this area, the housing plan, rather than simply recommending that the height for this, for the small district increased to perhaps five stories, instead the recommendation is that the city work with developers, and it work with providers of affordable housing to provide subsidies that may include financial subsidies, pilots, land acquisition where possible, so as to help create affordable housing in this area in a manner that's consistent with the redevelopment plan. So working within those bulk standards, and also working to achieve some of the infill development and redevelopment that's contemplated in that redevelopment plan. Next, on page 10 of the handout, we have the Springwood Avenue redevelopment area. This, too, of course, an existing redevelopment area largely along Springwood Avenue. And this redevelopment plan already includes affordable housing requirements that we're simply going to adjust. So right now, it, I should say, it permits a mix of uses, including residential, as well as non-residential. It requires a 20% set-aside for residential units, so for every, for example, 10 units created, two of them must be affordable. And for non-residential, it also requires a set-aside. So for, it varies depending on the type of non-residential space, but for, for every certain amount of non-residential use, one affordable housing unit is required. The affordable housing requirements in this redevelopment plan are based upon old state rules adopted by the council on affordable housing that were actually overturned by the courts. So my recommendation for this redevelopment area is to simply adjust the affordable housing requirements so that they're consistent with the law. What that means is the city needs to eliminate that non-residential affordable housing requirement, and then on top of that, I've also recommended an adjustment to the residential requirement to, it'll still be a 20% set-aside for affordable units, but we've expanded the range of affordability to include low income, moderate income, as well as middle income. And then last, but certainly not, not least, is this site, the Municipal Site Inclusionary. And as I think many of you in the public may know, this site is slated for redevelopment in the future. Given the city's control over the property and its control over the economics essentially in terms of how much height and density is going to be permitted, my recommendation is that the city really flex its muscles and achieve as much affordable housing on this site as is practically possible. And so what we have recommended in the housing plan is a 20% set-aside plus a 5% set-aside for middle-income housing, so all told, a 25% set-aside. So this is an opportunity, this is a place where the city can really expand the percentage of affordable housing that can realistically be achieved. And so in this housing plan, we've recommended that they do so. And so that covers each of the areas where either the existing zoning or the redevelopment plan is proposed to be revised so as to create opportunities for affordable housing. However, as, as was alluded in the earlier part of the discussion, the detail in those ordinances haven't yet been developed. That's simply part of the ordinance preparation process. This master plan this evening simply provides the policy foundation for which those ordinances can be based upon in the future, and can be crafted with input from this planning board, input from the public, as well as the council members and, and city staff and professionals. As I said, this plan is before you this evening to adopt as part of your master plan. Also, as I said, this is not the end of the road. We have to do those ordinances. But in addition to that, other items that are on the city's agenda, so to speak, for affordable housing, will have to include collecting development fees, as mentioned, those development fee ordinance that will need to be approved. And as part of that, the city will also have to put together a plan for how you propose to expend those funds. And so those affordable housing development fees that will be collected can be utilized to help address some of the subsidies called for in this housing plan. So for example, if you think about the Washington Avenue redevelopment area, where I talked about, the city should work with existing or future housing providers and developers potentially providing subsidies, some of those subsidies can come from those development fees that will be collected via the development fee ordinance and proposed to be expended in the spending plan. In addition, there are other ordinances that the city will need to adopt that will help with the administration and the implementation of this plan, and some of these are included as the appendices to the housing element. And it includes the Affordable Housing Ordinance. This ordinance simply regulates all of the affordable units in the city so as to make sure that the units required by the zoning that we, that I just went through are indeed reserved for folks that meet the income limits, and that those units meet all of the applicable state requirements, because, quite frankly, they're numerous. And so it makes sense for the city to have the, the regulations on the books so that you have the ability to enforce it when developers come forward to build affordable housing. And then lastly, for, for the ordinances that I think folks should be aware of, and this is additionally a, a citywide strategy, there's a mandatory set-aside ordinance that simply states that where the city, whether it's the planning board for, for an approval or the zoning board, if it's a density variance, a height variance, or the city council for rezoning or a new redevelopment area, where there's multifamily permitted via one of those, one of those mechanisms, an affordable housing set-aside will be required. So as an example, if a developer came before the city to request, let's say, a use variance to build an apartment building, the city is in no way, shape, or form obligated to approve that variance request. However, if you do, this ordinance will require that the developer provide an affordable housing set-aside. So ultimately, what it does is it captures opportunities for affordable housing in places that all of us haven't thought of quite yet. And it allows this plan to, to remain relevant in the future as some of the conditions in the city have begun to change, or perhaps as market forces have begun to change. So with that, that's a, a brief summary of the housing plan, but of course, I'm happy to answer any questions from all of you or the public.
Thanks, Beth. In your plan, in the affordable housing plan, it says that typical set-asides are 15% for rental and 20% for, for sale. I'm assuming we have pretty much, we're, we're talking about 20% in almost all the areas. Does it make a difference? Do we distinguish between for-sale and rental in those cases, or it's just pretty much across the board?
No, the, the way the housing plan has been written is there's a, a single set-aside recommended. 15% rental is typically, it is a typical rental set-aside, but it's most often utilized in municipalities that have a housing element that is intended to meet an obligation and must be approved by the court. A 15% set-aside for rental housing is, is a very particular, it meets a very particular regulation in the Council on Affordable Housing rules for municipalities are, who are required to incentivize rental affordable units over for-sale affordable units. So while that's a typical set-aside for rental, it's, and it's, I think it's informative, it's not as applicable here in Asbury Park as it would be in, say, a suburban municipality. in municipalities that have a housing element that is intended to meet an obligation and must be approved by the court. A 15% set aside for rental housing is, is a very particular, it meets a very particular regulation in the Council on Affordable Housing rules for municipalities who are required to incentivize rental affordable units over for sale affordable units. So while that's a typical set aside for rental, it's, and it's, I think it's informative, it's not as applicable here in Asbury Park as it would be in, say, a suburban municipality.
And also to that point, it's really, we're seeing throughout the state, we're seeing set asides higher than that.
Right.
Right? So that, you know, it's a benchmark, like Beth said, but there's no reason to be tied to that, particularly if people are willing to do more.
What we found going through the data was the city had a lot of affordable units over the years. But due to whatever circumstances happened in the past, they weren't restricted for the 30-year that the council had proposed. So we saw a lot, and it was probably based upon funding sources, we heard a lot that places were turning over and they were going market rate. We didn't know why, and then when we started digging into the data, we found that there might have only been a seven-year deed restriction. So with the rentals, one of the things that we want to do, we're getting into a little bit of the weeds now, is with the developer fee ordinance, is be able to hopefully keep some of those rentals as is and offer that benefit to, you know, okay, you can get $10 for market, you're charging six now, keep it, we can pay you four. So that was also part of the thought process is that we have to find a way to keep the existing units as is that are no longer deed restricted and the property owner can change. There was a lot of units that there was that sort of long-term thought process, and that's why the plan also states the 30-year, especially on the long-term tax exemption. We don't want to lose what we have, but how do we keep what we have when we have no incentive to offer?
Why would you give them a 30-year in your deed restriction? Why not make it perpetual?
So 30 years is the time limit required in order to generate credit, but I think you might want to know, the typical, the model affordability control, the model deed restriction more specifically states 30 years, not less than 30 years and until released by the municipality. So the deed restriction, the affordability controls are not eliminated until the city takes an action. They must be in place for 30 years, but they can't be released until the city passes, I believe, a resolution stating those controls are now complete.
Other municipalities do require a perpetual deed restriction. Solves a lot of paperwork. You don't have to keep records quite as...
We want to keep records. Yes.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that when you have a deed restriction, it goes, that is a perpetual situation, and, you know, if you don't have a time limit, it is perpetual. So why bother putting a time limit on it?
Well, as I said, 30 years is typical, and the way that this deed restriction will function, assuming the city uses the model, which I would recommend, the practical effect is that it is perpetual unless the city takes an act, an active action to release the units and allow them to be rented or sold to market rate households.
While I got you on the discussion, all these units should be, in my opinion, should be fully integrated in the development that they're in. You hint at that in the, in the master plan. Well, you don't hint at that, you, it's in the master plan right now, but the housing element is not that specific concerning integration of the, these units in the development that it's in. And I think that should be in there to, you know, make sure that, make sure that you don't move them from one location to another. If you're going to have a building with four units, it should be in four units.
Well, so a couple of things. One, once the, as part of any approval, the developer either through, literally through the approval process before this board or the zoning board, or at the construction or resolution compliance process, the developer will be required to identify which units will be affordable because that's necessary for your planner to confirm that they've, they've implemented their affordable housing requirement properly. However, the requirement to have the units fully integrated within a development, I agree with you, that's an important policy that the city should state. However, I must say that I think the proper location for that is within the ordinances. So where a set aside is required, there'll be a follow-up statement, the unit shall be integrated in the following manner throughout the development.
And the plan as drafted also calls for capturing, that if, for example, I think it was a 10% set aside and there's 43 units, so it's 4.3, that that 0.3, obviously you can't have a third of a unit, that they can pay into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to offset that 0.3. So the city's goal is to capture as much of this as possible.
Just a quick question on the development fees. I should have looked at the ordinance before this, but is it above a certain number of units that a developer would need to pay, pay the fee, or is it?
No, it's any new residential units, as long as we're not talking about either an affordable unit or a market rate unit in inclusionary development.
Right. Okay.
And where we are with that, and where we are with that, sorry, is the council's adopt, is introduced, we're waiting on Superior Court. The language in the ordinance says pending Superior Court, but we, we're just waiting till the end of the year. If the court doesn't bless it, we'll adopt it at the end of the year and it should be done, hopefully early next year. Typically, how is the fee calculated, the development fee?
So it's, it's set forth in COA's rules and then we mirror that in your ordinance. The residential development fee is 1.5% of the equalized assessed value of the home, of the new home in this example. And the non-residential, which is a statutory defined amount, is 2.5% of the equalized assessed value of the new non-residential space.
Any other questions from the, from the board?
I just have a couple of questions. Does the Affordable Housing Trust Fund exist already? You said that the fees, the developer fees would go into it.
It will be, it will become live, for lack of a better... I was trying to talk about, it becomes live once everything gets adopted, but it's just, at that point, it's a trust account within the city's general ledger.
Okay. So I think I would just encourage, I love the plan, I'm like all for moving this forward, it's very ambitious. I just think of the details that need to be worked out. Obviously, the ordinances, the teeth of it need to be coming in a quick succession of approving the plan. And I think the administration of that Affordable Housing Trust Fund and just general transparency related to it will matter a lot to the public.
One of the things that you see in the plan is the administrative agent. It is my opinion, we do not hire an administrative agent. It should be part, administrative agent would be the person who is responsible for making sure the affordable units are affordable units. We don't have anyone certified on staff now. I would not recommend that we create the position. The way it can be and should be set up, I've done this in other towns, Beth and I have talked about this numerous times, is that it should be part of the whole development package and that the developer should be then offsetting the cost of hiring, of maintaining the affordable, the AIA, the affordable agent. It just makes it easier for us and it's simple. And since it's a general ledger account, it's obviously operable. Any spending that comes out of it is done via resolution. It's on a bill list, so it's out there. But for the staffing level, I would never recommend hiring a staff to do this, especially in this day and age where I haven't seen a class offer to be certified in it in two or three years. It's just impossible to do. There are numerous nonprofits that do it, both nonprofit and for-profit. I've already spoken to our fiscal monitor at the state level that we might not, depending on how it's set up, technically we have to bid things, but we're trying to see how we can make this work where we don't have to bid it out because it's not really going to be us, but it's us. So we're trying to get through that in, I'm trying to get through that in and out, but yeah, it's, I agree with you.
And then just one other small comment concern. The incentives are very important, and I think that comes with increasing density and height and deciding where that's appropriate. I would have some concern about increased density, especially including affordable units or any vulnerable population in a flood zone, and that D.O.L.A. area is in a flood zone. So I think that it would have to come with some commensurate, maybe part of the ordinance is that also the utilities need to be raised above the first floor, but I think we just need to look at it kind of in a holistic way because when you put populations that are already economically disadvantaged in a flood zone, it obviously leads to bigger problems.
The floodplain manager was also briefed on this. That's me.
Anything else from the planning board? Any other questions? We want to open up the comments to the public? We have a three-minute time limit, please. Step up to the microphone. Yes, please, please state your name and address, please.
My name is Derek Minno Bloom. I live at 1108 First Avenue, Greenings Planning Board, neighbors. It's good to be here with you. I'm part of the Asbury Port...
Just one second.
Rather than go from question and answer and comments, they're going to be intertwined as they always are, let's get everybody sworn in.
Please raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State, can you spell your last name for me?
Minno, M.I.N.N.O.-D.L.O.O.M.
Thank you.
So my name's Derek, as I just said. I'm part of the Asbury Park Affordable Housing Coalition, which is a group of about 26 or 27 of us. Seven or eight of us are here tonight. And I just really wanted to start off by thanking the city, specifically Yvonne and Amy and Michael and Beth, who's not part of the city but is working with the city. But they've been really working with us as a grassroots movement, as a community-based organization, and we really appreciate that and really think the plan is super progressive and we really liked it. And we're hearing other Affordable Housing Coalition groups around New Jersey think it's progressive. So we really appreciate that. And also just appreciate when we had comments and things like that, we saw that you implemented them in the current plan. So thank you, and it's just good for the planning board and for the city that are watching to know that the city has been working with a grassroots community organization like that. And since we have kind of a more microphone, just to talk about some things we would still like to see added to the plan and ordinances, which I think Beth and Michael and Yvonne and Amy have already seen, but just to go over them really briefly so it's on public comment. So we strongly suggest that the Housing Trust Fund accounting be as transparent as possible. Best practices for this include detailing funds received on a public website. We encourage flexibility in the use of unit size standards set for affordable housing. We are excited to see the inclusion emphasis on family units, but want to be sure special need projects have the flexibility. We're curious why the standard for affordable housing only required 25% of units to be rental. We would like to see something around 50% based on the current demographics. We strongly request that inclusionary ordinance and set aside ordinances not only apply to new units, but also condo conversions and substantial rehabs. And then kind of in conversation with one of the planning board members, we would also like to see the city consider a longer affordable requirement beyond 30 years. So just really kind of jumping onto Beth, I think it's really important to have 30 years. So all the hard work the city and people here have done stays for that, but we would actually like to see it even longer so that a new council can't come on here who maybe not care so much about affordable housing, but that this would go for a longer time and be a legacy of racial justice and economic justice for Asbury. Ooh, 22 seconds. We're excited to see affordable housing percentages in the various redevelopment zones totaling 20%, but after further consideration and review, we feel there is no need for middle income units. The AMI for Asbury is lower than the region, and using the income limits listed in the plan for the region isn't the right yardstick for our town. Can I do five more seconds? Understanding these are limits, they must be used, we suggest instead limiting each region to 15% to low and very low and 5% for moderate. The only exception would be CBD, where we would recommend an increase to 15% low and very low. I had some more things, but thanks so much for your time and all your hard work, and enjoy the rainy day, everybody.
Good evening, planning board. Pam Lamberton, Sunset Avenue. I'm also part of the Affordable Housing Coalition. Just one second, we need to...
Please raise your right hand.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
My question is about the waterfront redevelopment agreement and how it had in it payments that the developer, waterfront redevelopment developer, would pay the city to put towards affordable housing. In the original plan, it was a million dollars a year for seven years. Now, that money was to be spent on affordable housing or other activities that the city deemed supported affordable housing in the city, which could be infrastructure, I'm assuming. But I'm wondering what the historical information on that fund, on that money is, how much has the city received? Has it been put into a fund or has, have we spent a million dollars a year toward affordable housing or, and why can't that be, money be used as another incentive? Thank you.
Do you want me to answer that? Or we can talk about it.
You can answer.
As part of the waterfront agreement, the master developer has an obligation to pay X amount of dollars when X amount of units is built. As part of the lot-by-lot amendment, that requirement was also carried over. The amount is ridiculously small, it's about $3,000 per unit when you start doing the math, where an affordable unit now will run you anywhere from 40 to $100,000. The money that Ms. Lamberton is speaking about was into the city of Asbury, quote-unquote, for lack of a better term, I'll call it a slush fund. So over the years, this money has been not used for affordable housing at all. It's been used for anything such as the boxing program and building the boxing ring to developing parks. It was, the language in the agreement and in the city's ledger is furthering affordable housing or any community improvement, which is quite honestly ridiculous. So as part of this plan and moving forward with the master developer, the city is actually going to require that any money that comes in from the master developer or subsequent developers as part of lot-by-lot be dedicated to the Housing Trust Fund so that it actually can be used to further affordable housing. We found no instance whatsoever that this money was actually used by previous governing bodies or staff to further affordable housing. It was just used for, quite honestly, projects. So we've, we've expressed to the master developer as part of the next round of agreements that we want to change that language because it's actually in the plan, in the developer's agreement. The master developer has said that's, it's the city's money, you spend it how you want. As part of the ordinances and the updates, we are going to be requiring by law that any money that comes in from the waterfront actually be used into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund instead of this city improvement fund because it wasn't used for its intended purposes. We've received, I think, a million dollars. Off the top of my head, we've received the first payment. We're getting near getting the second payment, and it's in the plan, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I can, I'll reiterate, the city never used any of that money for affordable housing.
Just a quick follow-up question, if I may. Subsequent developers, how are they assessed? Is it like a...
It's per unit.
Per unit?
We just divided the amount by the units that were required as part of the plan, and it comes to like $3,700 or $3,300, which is ridiculously low, but that's the way it was arbitrated. And again, it was the clearest way that the city staff and the redevelopment, the master developer felt that we can get lot-by-lot legally passed. If we tried to say, okay, now subsequent developers, you need $50,000 per unit, there's no, there's no basis for it, so we just continued the math. But it's, it was a missed opportunity over the years from, you know, many years of city activities. I understood why the money was used there, but now we sit here today, you know, trying to further affordable housing without the cash to do it. I'm going to take leave now and ask Pam if that answered the question. The next number, 600, you get a value. And I think right now we're at like 450. Give or take to that.
Thank you.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name for the record.
Jennifer Lampert, 512 Second Avenue, owner of Asbury Festive and Beer Garden. I just wanted to say, first of all, I think it's awesome that this is a priority, that affordable housing is being made a priority in Asbury Park. As a business owner, I wanted to bring to, onto the table, I have a question and a comment. The question is, how are you determining who is... The question is, how are you determining who is eligible for the affordable housing? And then, the second comment is, a couple of the other business owners in town, Russell Lewis, myself, a couple of people, we've often talked about our employees who are priced out of town. And we're a restaurant, bar, and event-heavy town, where employees leaving at three, four, or five in the morning sometimes, gotta go half an hour away or gotta go, like, out to other towns. And they really would like to, prefer to be in the town they work in. So, one of my dreams is to somehow pay the beer growing off someday and build housing that's targeting food and beverage industry people in town or people that work in town. But I just wanted to ask, how is it determined who, who qualifies for it? And put it in your heads to please consider the employees, dishwashers, food runners, people that, you know, work hard and don't make a ton of money and are getting priced out of town. That's all I got.
So, I'll answer the second one first, and Beth can get into the eligibility aspect. Jen, you-
Are you sick?
Hmm?
Are you sick?
I have vocal problems this year. Sorry.
So, that is one of the things that has been in the, the subcommittee's discussion a lot, is how do we make the city affordable for everybody? The best opportunity is where we're standing right now. We've had this property out to bid twice for requests for proposals. The last one we rejected. We were recommended and the council agreed to reject any proposal because of the opportunity zone. The opportunity, opportunity zone is federal legislation that allows for the capital costs to be strung out over ten years, seven years minimum, ten years maximum, providing a huge tax incentive to developers. So, early next year, we're hopeful to redraft the RFQ for this parcel. We've had discussions publicly of anywhere from eight to twelve stories to allow for workforce housing for all walks of life. We know that this parcel is the last great parcel that the city owns that we can do something which meets your needs.
Go.
So, it's been in discussion. It's hopefully coming sooner than later.
Okay.
And Beth will get into the eligibility amounts.
So, affordable housing in New Jersey is really quite, is really quite complicated. In New Jersey, in order to be eligible to occupy a deed-restricted unit, you have to meet certain income and household size requirements. So, the income requirements are relatively easy in the sense that it's just submitting documentation that your, your income, if you are going to qualify as a low or moderate income household, is at or below eighty percent of the region's median income. So, it's essentially a calculation of the tri-county region, so it's Monmouth Ocean and Mercer County here, based on generally HUD data that is used to, to calculate the income limit. So, a household that seeks affordable housing must document its income. But then beyond that, to answer your question about how there's a hope that it would be perhaps reserved or prioritized for the city's employees, whether they're not necessarily actual city employees, but folks that might work within the city's restaurants and shops and so forth. There's a requirement that all affordable housing units be affirmatively marketed, and then there's a lottery system. So, as I said, there's that three-county region. That means that the units must be marketed to all households in that three-county region using specified requirements such as identification of certain newspapers, hanging flyers in certain buildings and so forth. After that, in terms of selecting the, the actual household, the Affordable Housing Administrator will be required to, to take the eligible pool of applicants, so those folks that have shown qualified income, that were part of the affirmative marketing, and then select the household at random as part of a lottery system. So, in New Jersey, it is not possible for a city to reserve affordable units. For as good as the idea might be, you're not able to reserve affordable housing units for folks that either existing, currently live or perhaps currently work within the city limits. It's got to be done as part of this random selection. However, creating new affordable housing units here in Asbury Park will increase the opportunities for affordable housing, and so it'll increase the likelihood that existing employees in the city will, will be able to occupy that unit. And then also, what happens on a more practical level is folks that live or work near affordable housing that's being created, they're the first people that apply. They're the first people that get on the list. And so, that, that lottery is often packed with locals or folks that are familiar with the project. And so, I mean, it's, it's not, it's certainly not as good as reserving the units specifically for folks in Asbury that need the units. But it can be a boost to make sure that folks that we're all thinking of that need affordable housing are more likely to be able to achieve it here in the city.
The income amounts are on- Sorry. The income amounts are on page six and seven of the plan, which I believe is still on our website. So, you can actually see, and anyone can see, what the, the family and individual income levels are.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next. Somebody come up.
My name's Andrew Karas. I'm an attorney. First of all, I want to commend the city for coming up with this plan. I think it's very important. I think it's very good. One thing I believe that you have to keep in mind is that it is the developers that will be responsible for building these units and developing the property. Unless the incentives are there which provide economic benefit to the developers, not only won't you get any affordable housing, you're also not going to get any development. So, you have to keep that in mind when crafting these ordinances and developing this plan. One thing I heard with regard to the CBD redevelopment zone, I do a lot of work in the CBD, is that there would be, I guess, an exclusion with regard to non-residential parking. There is no requirement right now for any existing non-commercial or non-residential development in the CBD. So, there's really no benefit relative to that. So, if you create essentially residential units along with the commercial units that are existing, you're actually going to take a bath in a sense because you're going to get whacked with the fee. There's no property in which to actually add, or for the most part, there is a property for which to add any parking on most of the development sites within the CBD zone. Consequently, if you're going to do additional affordable housing, you're going to get hit also with the fund requirement in terms of contributions. I, I think that has to be taken into account when crafting these ordinances, what that economic impact is going to be on the developers. That's it.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I just wanted to give one quick clarification. The development fee ordinance cannot be imposed, those residential or non-residential development fees cannot be imposed on any developer that's providing affordable units. So, if a developer is coming in, creating, say, even, even just a ten percent affordable housing set-aside, that means that the residential development fees associated with that project would not be required. So, I understand, I understand your point, but just a, a small point of clarification. There's no double-dicking, double, double dipping in terms of requiring affordable units and getting that development fee.
But what I'm talking about, though, is the contributions, parking fund.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. You mean the parking fund.
Well, just one clarification on that. There is a requirement for new non-residential uses.
That's correct.
All right. Next.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name for the record.
Felicia Simmons.
I'm sorry?
Felicia Simmons.
Thank you.
Quick question where I couldn't finish, where the rest of my committee started, where Derek started. And you spoke earlier about the RFP for this municipal plaza. Looking through, we want to know, can we go a hundred percent affordable for this plaza here? Why stay at twenty-five? This is something that's owned and developed by the city. And there's actually developers and other people you can kind of look to, to kind of offset the, the finances or work with, that we've kind of isolated to work with to build a hundred percent affordable on the one or like two pieces of property that we actually have here in the city that is owned by us. And second, we talk about a D, thirty or deed restriction. We say perpetual, but how about just say ninety-nine years? Other municipalities say ninety-nine-year deeds or a hundred-year deeds. And also, we spoke about not kind of acquiring, well, I know other cities that part of their checklist, they have a checklist when they do affordable housing or opens. One of the checklists or part of their spreadsheet is being a resident of that municipality is weighted. You had like, and I, I don't want to name them on TV, but they're very close to us. Like, next door. Where one of the requirements on the, the weighted list is be a resident of the town, meet the financial incomes, work for the city, you know, just, they have a whole checklist. And can't we do something similar here to make sure that we kind of keep our residents in the city? And just because I kind of promised this person, I'll speak of it, is a need. And I'm going to not mention her name, but mention her situation. I got a stop yesterday while shopping by a worker in the store who says that she's fighting very hard to have an affordable place for her to live. She's crying with her and her daughter. She's very stressed. She's being priced out on Eighth Avenue where she lives, where the prices are increasingly going out, up and up and up, where it's pretty much wanted, she's wanted to move out, where that's just the onward plight of that side of town. Also, in our, they, sorry to ramble, I'm trying to remember it all, is we were speaking about substantial, Derek spoke about substantial rehabs. That's part of the plight to the city where we have apartment buildings that aren't necessarily slated affordable, but they're cost-efficient. And what's happening is they're being moved out, regutted, completely gutted, and then re-marketed back for triple, sometimes four times the price of the, what is it? One is a thousand dollars, and then the one across the hall might be twenty-two hundred. Can't we do something about that in our, in our plan?
The thirty-year deed restriction, I believe, was already covered with Mr. Henry's comments, so I don't want to reiterate what was said. The substantial rehab, we also got into, so I don't want to, again, reiterate what was said. With the marketing aspect, as you mentioned, Beth had just finished stating that you legally can't say that it is for an Asbury Park resident. And that, and is part of the marketing plan. There are legal requirements on how that is met. But that does not stop the municipality, any municipality, from, you know, taking ads in a local paper on their own, notifying residents, going to churches and say that soon this lottery is coming up, please get your name in. And that is one of the aspects that is part of the plan and our internal communications we would be doing to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to, you have to meet the obligations of the plan, but also to make sure that Asbury residents are aware of something so that they can apply to be in. Concerning a hundred percent on this site, quite honestly, it just wouldn't work. With the federal tax credits changing for affordability and they're not being tax-deductible anymore, we've had that discussion internally. We've had it with redevelopment council. We've had it with our financial advisors. And no one believes that a hundred percent affordable is actually going to work in this day and age. Boston Way and the Michaels Group Project, Renaissance Village took years to happen because of the competitive nature, and those were actually Sandy funds, that right now, the federal market and the tax credit market isn't there to subsidize a project of this cost. Realistically, you can probably build something. The carrying cost would be rather large, but you also have to demo the site. And as part of any project, you have to move these offices and still do environmental assessments. The cost would just be too high to have just a hundred percent affordable. But we, we had those discussions of what it would take, and it just, the market just isn't there.
Okay. Please, do you swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Tracy Rogers. One of the things on the missed, uh, ten, uh, ten thirty-four, so, one of the, one of the missed opportunities we talked about with the money we didn't get, didn't use from I-Star Asbury Park, I mean, I-I Star Asbury Partners, was the, what could have helped the conversion. I don't know if many of you know, a lot of the buildings from First through Eighth have multi-unit buildings, over twenty units. And most of those buildings are now going to be turned over to market rate or raise the rent or convert it to condos. So, the missed opportunity we had of not being able to use that money for incentives, we're going to be losing a lot of properties in that area. There's one on actually Seventh that's actually completely vacant. I know two other units, it's, two other buildings on Third and Fourth are now completely empty, and I know their rents are going to skyrocket. So, I can tell you, multiple buildings going through our addresses, through that whole section, that we're going to miss out on a lot of missed opportunities for affordable housing. So, we need to look at finding some income to incentivize those, those units from turning over because we're going to be hit very hard. The middle class, when you're saying middle class on income, you're almost talking about eighty-nine and ninety thousand dollars on income, which relegates to about thirty thousand a month in rent. If you look at Cookman, which is one of the most prominent areas most people want to move to, a two-bedroom is about twenty-four hundred, which over that equals to about that middle class. So, we're looking at keeping that middle class, but they're already here. If we pull up any rental papers, you know we're already meeting that income. So, why reduce our twenty percent that we had in that, that we are looking at for low and moderate? Why lower that? That makes no sense. Yardstick, AMI just doesn't see it. We have a high property rate, and we have a lot of workers that live in this city. So, we need to make sure we readjust that thinking. Also, we do have one other property. The city is still working on getting control back into it, on Springwood. And we would like to see that at the highest percentage of, 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 of affordable as possible, if that can happen. So, those, those three issues, we want to look at and hope the city can address those issues. The, the other property on Memorial and Springwood, that the city is working on getting control back up.
Thank you. Next.
Please raise your right hand. Do you-
Corinne Nevin, three D L A Court, Asbury Park.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to, I was trying to go over the ordinance very quickly, but I didn't. Besides media law, I'm at a disadvantage here. I wanted to ask, one of, one of the things that Michael brought up was how, you know, these monies just got kind of spent on anything. That's what I'm hoping to avoid this time. And I realize that there's a, a special certification for the person who's going to be administering the trust fund, and this is, you know, this is two thousand and eighteen. Things are going to be done much differently. I just wanted some more assurances about the funds, that, that all of the fees and funds will, none of them will be going into a general fund because that's where things have been lost in the past, right, Michael?
Yes. There's multiple safeguards involved in this process. One, it would, anything would have to be calculated through the Building Department. And Building, the Building Department issues a monthly report to the city manager and to DCA, so you actually see what amount was collected. We have that on our, one of our few forward-facing aspects of our operations. If you go to, I don't remember the exact link of it, but there is monthly reports that are posted from departments. It would actually be included once we start with that. It would also be two ordinances. And as I mentioned before, anything would have to be approved by council beforehand and also on part of the bills list. So, it's not just going to be lost. It's actually a dedicated trust fund that has reporting requirements through multiple levels, unlike the current existing conditions where the city would be able to use it for whatever it wants. We don't want that to happen.
Oh, yes. We had asked about having some kind of real-time ability to check the website and see what the trust fund was doing. Will we be, be able to do that?
Regretfully, no. We've been looking at some, we're upgrading the website, our city website, right now. We don't have the ability to- We don't have the ability to forward-face the, well, really any department about financial aspects of it. Mr. Manzella, who's shaking his head yes, has actually been part of some of the website development internally.
Who is that? Oh.
We want to be able to do it. If you look at the state's website, they did that with Sandy, but that was paid for through Sandy Funds to do it. We would love to be able to forward-face, but right now, our financial software that we use, it's a company called Admins, and they're in like three hundred and fifty municipalities, doesn't have that ability to do it. You can obviously open the reports, monthly, weekly, however you want to, but we can't just push a button to upload, which we would love to, like status. It actually is printed manually through account codes. It's just the way the software is set up. We don't have that ability.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, next.
Just when we were talking about the, asking for a hundred percent affordable, it actually wasn't in this property, it was in Springwood and Memorial, that city-owned property, which makes it a little more realistic. So, thank you.
Please raise your hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony given during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
My name is Carrie Butch. I live at five hundred Deal Lake Drive. You can all come visit me Christmas time. I just want to tell you, I'm fascinated by the statistics in this report, and I think that each and every one of you should have a meeting and just have, just talk about what the statistics are saying in this document, because they're talking about the changing demographic of the city of Asbury Park. And a lot of this is, quite frankly, pretty scary and pretty jarring. And, and you talk about the people that are leaving and the people that are coming in, and the differences in income, and the differences in, you know, everything. So, I just want to point out that I love statistics, I'll, I'll join you for this conversation. And there is an assumption here that I don't buy, and, and the assumption is somewhat throughout the document that says there's more affordable housing in Asbury Park than there is outside Asbury Park. And I can tell you that they're basically saying, they're taking twenty-twelve to twenty-sixteen American Community Survey five-year estimate data, and then under here it says, "The margin of error for this information exceeds the estimated counts. As such, the estimates may be unreliable." They're saying the median rent in Asbury Park is nine hundred and five dollars a month, and the median rent outside Asbury Park in Monmouth County is twelve hundred and seventy-three. I think we have to take a look at the statistics and what's really going on, because I can tell you, in my building, the rents are sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars for a one-bedroom and more, and going up every single year. So, I think, I think it's a great plan, and I, and I applaud the mayor and council and the planning board for doing a great job, but also take a look at the statistics when you have a chance, and let's have, let's have a discussion as a community on what those statistics mean, because those statistics are real people. They're real families, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next.
Do you swear affirm the testimony given during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name for the record.
Ernest Minnelli, four hundred Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I heard the city manager say, Michael and Beth have done this in a lot of other municipalities. Not right now, but I would like to know which municipalities. A comment, I'm wondering if, if the board and those present at this meeting really think the fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand residents that live here, myself included, even really know anything that you're talking about? I just, you know, I've, I've been around, I understand real estate and a lot of things, but I have to tell you, this is, this is a great, I'm trying to give a light, but like a cell job, and self-accolades, in other words, I keep hearing names like, you know, thank Amy. Well, I don't know who Amy you're talking about. If someone is getting a lot of credit and you're referring to first names, I mean, shouldn't they be here? So, that's another comment. Now, I think it's important, like most plans, if you ever see, like if you're plotting crime or demographics in a city or a municipality, you usually create what the public needs, which is known as a dot map. And the dot map for this should be, let's see what affordable housing we have right now in Asbury, and then let's look at the targeted area that you're talking about, and then, so graciously, as the woman who's still here stated, there's a little bit of problem with the fuzzy data and statistics used to kind of portray this. For example, quickly, what happens to all the people that were moved out of Boston Way, that were moved into Neptune, Neptune City, that are low income? And are they coming back? So, that's a question. Now, now, I'd like to mention some names here, and you tell me if there's affordable housing planned for here. North Beach, Ocean Club, Deal Lake Towers, Vive, Wesley Grove, Griffin. And I'd like to know, is there one, one affordable in these places? Because if there's one coming up in the Ocean Club, I'm going to apply for it. And I know it doesn't have to be the six million dollar condo that's waiting for Mr. Springsteen, but I'll be happy with one on a lower level facing Kingsley Avenue. So, I guess at this formula, I should be able to move in for about fifteen hundred a month, correct? I could afford that. And that's it. I would hope that, most importantly, when...
No?
Motion to close public comment.
Second?
Go in favor. All right. I'd, I'd like to just take a moment to thank the public for, for coming out and giving us some insight in what their thoughts are. It's always appreciated. It gives us more things to think about, obviously, besides what is being presented to us. And I, and I'll just take that from the board and everyone here to thank you for taking the time to speak to us. Another thing that I would like to do, and I don't know if the rest of the board agrees with this or not, but I would like, this is an incredibly important project, an important approval that you're looking for us to provide, and I have to be honest, that what's being provided, I need a moment. I need more time, personally. I don't know if the rest of the board agrees with me or not.
I was going to suggest the same thing.
But what, what I'd like to do is I'd like to, if it's okay, for us to have this continue to the December tenth meeting, which is our next meeting, give us some time to, to absorb everything that's been said, and to review the plans once again, both the actual first document and also what was discussed today. That's what I would like to propose. If, is there any, are there any objections to that, Jack, that I'm doing something I shouldn't be doing?
No.
Okay. All right. I'd like to propose that we, I'd like to move that we, we move this to the December tenth meeting to continue the discussion. And if, obviously, if it doesn't work out for all the professionals that need to be here at that time, that we move it to another day. The December tenth, I don't think there's anything about that date that's magical. It's our next, it's our next meeting. If the professionals cannot be here for that day, I'm fine with moving it to another day. But I think that we need some time to absorb and consider what's being said here, due to how important this, this plan is to us and going forward. So, I'd like to propose that, and I don't know how we do that for a motion, but that's my motion.
Can I comment?
You may, if you'd like.
I have no problem with what you're suggesting, but since you're suggesting, I'd like to throw in my two cents. What Carrie mentioned, some of the numbers totally baffled me. So, Appendix Page Twelve, Appendix Page Twelve looked at unemployment and those numbers, not at all, for Asbury Park. I don't care what everybody says, we only have six percent unemployment, some of the numbers are through with Carrie. I also have a couple of questions as far as like, there's no definition of an artist, and there's going to be this artist community. So, somebody's got, better give me a definition of artist. Am I an artist if I go to the sidewalk and I show up and I'm friends with the people and they're artists committed? Number three, I totally agree, it should be more than thirty years. I agree with the ninety-nine years, because numbers are going to be here in thirty years, and so why, if it's the norm, can we be above the norm and make it longer? Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
I just have a question, too. The fifteen percent for the rental, so is that, like, that's the minimum? But you, y'all stated that in other municipalities, it sometimes exceeds that. Can't we just have a, are we tied into this fifteen percent, saying that it has to be at least that, or can we have a higher number, that the minimum has to be for rental?
The rental set aside, the city of Asbury Park, because you don't have a specific number you're trying to solve for, like most municipalities are doing, you're simply trying to create a plan that promotes affordable housing in a way that you see fit. That means that you have flexibility in the set asides that you impose, whether it's fifteen percent, twenty percent, or ten percent. But the item that's got to be coupled with any increase in that set aside is also an increase in the compensatory benefit. So, as you ask for more from a developer, you're required to give a greater incentive. So, if you, if the planning board, either between now and December tenth, or if the council through its ordinance writing sees an opportunity to, say, increase the development intensity or density in a particular area beyond what's recommended in this housing plan, you can do so and then also increase the set aside at that time. But those two things have to move in tandem.
And so, like, for rental, typically a compensatory benefit would be like a subsidy, like a financial subsidy?
It's typically, when we're talking about inclusionary housing, it's density, it's more...
So, like, related to, like, in CBD, they, you give a modest height compensatory benefit of ten feet, that doesn't really seem like much of a benefit to, as an incentive for a developer in CBD to provide more affordable housing?
So, in, in the CBD, for example, I would say the compensatory benefit recommended in the housing plan is the lowest recommend, but the incentive, those benefits, or excuse me, the set aside is also the lowest recommended. So, yes, there's a modest increase of, of ten feet, but then there's also a modest set aside being requested of ten percent.
And to further that, part of that would also be as part of any long-term tax exemption discussion? And if it's possible, could any of the board members email me questions or statements by December fifth, so Beth and I can get any answers to you, Beth can get answers to you by the tenth? Yeah. Yeah, that's what, we'll have to do revisions and renotice if there's anything substantial.
I'd, I'd like to suggest, just because of the, how important this is, that we do renotice.
Yes.
No matter, because the public deserves to know that we're doing this, and they should be able to know that they should be here if it does happen on the tenth, whatever the notice is.
When's your next meeting after the tenth?
January.
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 You don't want to do a meeting on the twenty-fourth?
So, we have...
You're all volunteers, people, December twenty-fourth is acceptable to have a meeting.
All right, so we have...
I won't be here.
We, we have December tenth or the, you know, probably the second meeting in January, because the first meeting is everything that we have to deal with for business, having to do with the planning board.
So, then why don't we just say, questions due December twelfth? We can give them back to you guys at the end of the year, if that changes any of the documents have to be renotified, and we're here in January.
Yeah, and we're gonna, let's go procedure. Notice for the next meeting, if it's on the tenth, that you're going to carry it, but if there's going to be any changes to the element that's been presented, the master plan element, that amended report should be resent to the various parties again, so that they've had an enhanced opportunity to see it. So, it might be a double notice there, depending upon how...
Yeah. When do you think the January meeting is?
January seventh and twenty...
Twenty, what, the twenty?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Seventh, fourteen or twenty-eight?
Seven and twenty-eight, according to the...
The seventh is usually some business that we have to do beginning of your business?
So, we'd probably notice for the twenty-eighth meeting. That's probably because of the end. All right, so, yeah, you don't have to give comments to us until the eighteenth or so.
Eighteenth of January?
And then we can make any changes and notice at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, I mean, we can get it.
Eighteenth of December comments?
Yeah, you said January.
I did?
You may, you may.
That's a Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah, then we'll know what notice needs to be sent, so we'll know where it is.
I'm sure there's going to be a substantial change or two, we'll just do it to be safe.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. The motion is for us to, to move this presentation over to, to January twenty-eighth, the January twenty-eighth meeting with notice. That's it?
I second that motion.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Tony Corrello?
Yes.
Trudy Syfak?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Rick Lampert?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Barbara Krezak?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
Thank you all. Okay, next we have up is two hundred and, two hundred and eight Main Street?
Hello?
Amy Menatier, this is the board. My name's George McCall, I represent two zero eight Main Street Real T L L C.
Oh, can you just speak to the, speak to the microphone?
We, I'll get it.
Oh, is that going?
Yeah.
Oh, you might want to go to the other.
We filed an application for an informal. We're looking to be referred to the Design Review Committee. My architect had some issues that he wanted to discuss with the committee, and so we filed this informal, trying, trying to follow the guidelines provided by the, by the city. So, that's all we're looking for. I know you're busy tonight, so if we could have a referral, then I would appreciate that, and if, I guess Barbara gives me a date for one or two appear, we would be done for this evening.
Jack, do we have to do, what do we have to do here? Do we just say yes, or do we need a motion, or what?
I don't need a motion, the board, just to do a verbal motion to...
I move that we send this application to two hundred and eight Main Street LLC to the Design Review Committee.
I second.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Tony Corrello?
Yes.
Trudy Syfak?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Rick Lampert?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Barbara Krezak?
Yes.
Okay, thanks very much. Happy holidays to everyone. That's the first of the year for me, but I probably won't be seeing anybody until next year.
And we'll, and we'll miss you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Interfaith, please. Step on up.
I'm Jay, I'm with the board, I know you want to move quickly, so, John Marmora for the applicant Interfaith neighbors. I'll be very, very brief. I do have two witnesses, I won't call them unless you have questions. I have a representative from Interfaith neighbors, Patrick Durkin, we also have our engineer, Brian Grant, but again, only if you have questions. What we're asking for, keeping in mind, we're a forty percent affordable set aside project, so we're actually looking for a little bit of help, excuse me, a little bit of help from you. We received a combined, if you recall, site plan and subdivision approval. We have a, to be, just colloquial, a use it or lose it grant that has to close by year end. So, what we're asking is to separate the subdivision from the site plan. I understand the concern of the city, as always, if, once a subdivision is perfected and filed, individual lots can then be conveyed, but we, we are happy to consent to a condition that no lot would be conveyed unless and until all improvements are installed and a certificate of occupancy issued for that individual lot. I think that then totally protects the city from any concern you might have, and at the same time, by perfecting the subdivision and recording it and conveying the property to us prior to twelve thirty-one eighteen, enables us to close on our funding grant. That's the gist of our request. I can be more specific, or call witnesses if you would like.
Just real quick, I recall that during the testimony, there was some talk of this project being done in phases, like four units built at a time.
Right.
Just real quick, I recall that during the testimony, there was some talk of this project being done in phases, like four units built at a time.
Right.
I guess I'd, I'd look to the board and our professionals to see if, if that's a reasonable condition, that none of the other lots be conveyed until that first phase is done, or something like that? I don't, I don't know if, if the applicant would be.
The entire phase, if it's built in phases, that for the entire phase, which would be phase one, for example, all of the improvements for that phase one would have to be.
Be completed before conveyed.
Correct, before correct, conveying any lot in that phase. So I, I, like I said, I think that totally protects the city because your concern obviously is all of a sudden there are conveyances and you're dealing with more than one person here at some subsequent hearing. But it would all stay in Interfaith neighbors' ownership unless and until we have a CO, meaning the city has approved the sale of the individual lot.
How about permits? Are you going to try and put permits before conditions of approval or?
Construction permits? No.
So then it would be a problem if we don't have advances and no permits to issue until the resolution compliance is.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, the plans would have to be signed by the planning board, the site plan. So we're just looking to get the subdivision plan signed and recorded. But as long as you, the conditions you're referring to are site plan permits.
Yes, well, once you get the, all you really want to do is get a deed recorded for your subdivision.
Correct, right.
And then you're going to finish up with your resolution.
Correct, right. So we, we need the subdivision plan signed by the board.
I get what you mean. But that's it, that's the extent of which you're seeking to go put the cart before the horse.
Exactly.
The rest of it, we'll take care of, so we put the cart behind us.
Correct.
Does anybody, does anybody have any concerns that they would like to ask regarding this request? Anything from the board members?
Sure. Why don't we get, if you don't mind, why don't we get the staff sworn in?
Yes.
We'll let Doug speak about, just an idea of what these conditions are in our system.
Do you swear affirm the testimony given during these proceedings will be the truth, or truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your names and your affiliation with the city, please.
Michael Sullivan, Clark Jay Hints, I'm a board man.
Douglas Quelland, Inside Engineering, Board Engineering.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I can summarize, basically, we received some revised plans and documentations from the applicant. And I'll try to keep it brief. More or less, some of the outstanding items for resolution compliance are board planner approval of some of the landscaping, design elements, board attorney approval of some of the deeds related to stormwater management.
Yeah.
There's some minor plan revisions, outside agency approvals from Monmouth County Planning Board, Prevalsoil Conservation District, performance guarantee and inspection fee, which wouldn't happen until compliance was demonstrated with the resolution. And one of the big ones is submit confirmation from the city that the city will maintain. So there's a common stormwater pipe, basically tying all the properties together, and it has now been revised to be in the right of way. So we would need confirmation that the city is actually going to maintain that. All of these things are very doable. The only question is, will it get done? And, you know, I'll leave that up to you guys to decide. But I don't see anything major here that, you know, could cause a lot of problems. Again, it's just a question of, will it actually happen?
Let me ask you a question, Doug. You're talking about the site plan, correct?
Yes.
And Interfaith is talking about the, the subdivision plan, which are two distinct items.
Both granted at the same time, part and parcel of each other.
Yes, but would there be a problem separating the two? I think that's what Interfaith.
Yeah, not with, there would be unless you put these safeguards in. You wouldn't want to have the applicant have a subdivided piece of property perfectly recorded out the freehold, and then decide to do that, walk away, never complete the site plan portion, and we're stuck with these properties already subdivided and nothing's being built.
Yeah, I agree with you, Jack, but that is, you indicated what had to be done in order to make that subdivision, to perfect the subdivision and to protect the city.
Yes.
So that could be separated without.
Oh, well, what, what could happen is, I believe we can put enough safeguards in here that would obviously give the applicant incentive to complete the process and be done with it because what good is the parcel of land if they can't do anything with it other than have a deeds subdivision be recorded and have a failed project? So the restriction of the resolution, I would say, is subject to no, you know, until the resolution compliance is complete, is certified by the board for years. And planners, since they're their part and parcel, there's no advances, no permits to issue for the project itself. We've kind of tied them up where they have to proceed with the finishing up of the site plan.
Exactly. And by way of a reason for the planning board to do so, I would just implore you to consider that this is a forty percent affordable project. I know we were talking twenty percent. This is money out there that can come into the city. It's coming in through us, obviously, I recognize that, but it really helps us build a forty percent affordable project. So it'd be a shame to just let that money go. We have no intention of dragging our feet. We hope to be under construction as soon as possible, but this is at least a means of allowing us to close on that, on that funding prior to year end.
And does the board have any other questions? Anybody else on the board?
I move that we open public comment on this old business item.
Public comment? Second?
I'll second.
Rachel, do you swear affirm the testimony given during these proceedings will be the truth, or truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. State your name for the record.
Mrs. Mulley, four hundred D L A Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. So, being born in Long Branch and, and partially raised in Asbury Park over seventy years, I've seen a lot of things, gone to a lot of meetings. And one thing I'd like to kind of refer to, you may think it's not related, but it kind of is. When Long Branch decided to build Pure Village, to take private property for public use, which is the law, the federal law, they really intended to build high-end units. And what they realized was, is if they presented it as taking private, and they did eminent domain, they threw out all the residents. And then they come back and they thought, in this plan, you know, we can tie it up in court for five years, and we know we're going to lose, but we'll have them building, people living there already. So now you have four thousand dollars, six thousand dollar a month units there, which were supposed to be for public use, but the genius of the developers and their representatives was, they'll just pull the whole thing over on the city. And me personally, seeing Asbury and Long Branch develop, to me, they're wanting the same. Everything's always presented of it's for the people, and we're going to bring in money, and it never happens. I mean, there isn't a place to eat in Asbury that's affordable, there isn't a place to sleep in Asbury that's affordable. There's no place to do anything in Asbury Park that's affordable. So when you listen to these presentations, you wonder like, where's the disconnect? Presentations are eloquent, they sound great, but we wind up with a development on Springwood with a living room window that's built right on Springwood Avenue. Who really wants to live like that? Is that really the way it should be? So what I think is, low income are used like as a chess game, as a pawn. And then the promise always is urgent, we'll bring in money to the city. And it's always like, you got to prove it right now before the end of the year. I think that's all built into the presentation. Create a sense of urgency, make it sound like it's for the average person or the low income, get it approved, and then all the changes happen. So I don't mean to be negative, if that sounds negative, it's just realistic. I mean, again, look at Long Branch and Asbury, and low income, it just doesn't exist. I mean, we've had testimony of people that have employees, none of them can live here. I mean, it's a fact. Who's going to live on Cookman Avenue that works as a table server in the Beer Garden or somewhere else? You can't even dream about living here. That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Motion closed.
Second.
Okay. So the motion to, we need, we're, I'd like to present a motion to allow this with the contingencies that Jack had mentioned, to, to protect the city in every way that it possibly can. Second.
Yvonne, if you second?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Tony Perillo?
Yes.
Trudy Syfax?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Rick Lampert?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Barbara Crizak?
Yes.
Thank you very much, we appreciate the accommodation, and happy holidays. I'll be the second one to go.
Okay, the next item that we have is seven twenty-five Madison. This one is already noted to be carried to December tenth?
Motion to carry the application to December tenth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
With no notice, with no.
With no further notice.
No, no, there hasn't been any notice.
Okay.
With notice.
It doesn't need.
All right, with notice. Is it with notice?
Doesn't need, go ahead.
No, they, it wasn't actually noticed, so it's okay that you mention it because people may be here because they saw it on the agenda online.
So correction, motion to carry the application to December tenth with proper notice.
With proper notice, right.
All in favor?
Hi. Okay, thirteen oh two Washington Avenue.
Yes, I do. Eugene Matthews. My name is Eugene Matthews, I'm the owner of thirteen oh two Washington Avenue.
I've looked at the notices. I'm worried I'd see a good. No, you don't have to, that's just to get you started. You take, you take the ball and run.
Anyway, I'm the owner of thirteen oh two Washington Avenue, known as Block fourteen oh three, Lot Two. My proposal to the board is that the second story of the house is roughly fourteen by forty-five. The back half of the house is fifteen by fourteen. That is still a single story. I'd like to take the whole second story of the house off and make it two bedrooms and one bathroom. Total square footage of the house would roughly be about twelve hundred and sixty square feet. The house will have direct hot water, forced hot air coming down from the attic with air conditioning throughout the house. It has zip wall on the outside of the house, which is an energy efficient sheeting on the house, vinyl siding with one by four wrapped around the windows, timber line roof on the house. The air conditioning unit for the house will be a sixteen seater unit. Hardwood floors throughout the house. The deck that's on the front of the house will obviously be redone. There's going to be another deck off the back of the house, which is roughly eight by fourteen. I took down all the trees on the property so that it, from any danger of the trees coming down to any of the cars that were in the parking lot next to me. The church is to the west of me, and the church's parking lot is to the east of me. So there's nothing on either side of the house that I have. I intend to enclose the backyard with a shadow box fencing, which is a private fencing, and put all grass in the backyard of the house. The basement of the house is Yankee basement, it's six foot high, and I intend to sheet rock the ceiling and use that as storage or play area, whatever you would like to use it for. But from what I'm telling you, the basement basically would only have the electrical panel down there and the hot water, forced hot water box, which is basically, I don't know, it can be anywhere by fourteen by twenty-four inches. Instead of having a great big hot water heater down there, it's direct, direct hot water. Excuse me. There was some question about the engineering, about the height. He wanted me to increase the roof. The roof would be an eight pitch, and the total height of the house with the first floor, the second floor, floor beams, the second floor studs, and the height of the roof would roughly be around twenty-three feet. The front of the house would be, the house, excuse me, would be a hip roof with the front of the house having an A that would funnel back into the bedroom. The bedrooms are going to be about fourteen by sixteen feet with ten-foot-high tray ceilings in them, box ceiling and, and the tray box in the entire bedroom in the front and rear of the house to give a better volume to the house inside of the house. Obviously, the house is only twelve hundred and sixty square feet when it would be finished, so it's a relatively small house, but the bedrooms would be fourteen by sixteen, and with the tray ceilings would increase the volume of the rooms, making the rooms and the house look a lot bigger than it is. I don't know, is there any questions?
I'm just a lawyer.
So I guess I'll jump ahead of what the professionals will probably say. And one of the things that strikes me about this application is the lack of windows on the second floor. Is there any reason?
The reason why I didn't put any windows on the west side of the house was Michelle Alonso had originally had told me that I couldn't put any windows on the west side of the house. And when you have a bedroom with a closet, you have the double window facing the south and north, so you would have your bed on one side, and on the other side you would have a dresser. So I would have room maybe in the west side of each bedroom to put a three-foot window in the corner next to a dresser. I mean, you're limited with space inside the bedroom, and to add another window, you're just taking away from furniture space on the wall. But if you want me to add a window in each corner of the upstairs rooms facing the west towards the.
Yeah, I just think, looking at traditional house, home design in this area, I mean, typically there are.
Your windows.
No, I, I agree with you, there's windows.
Even if they're, you know, shorter.
Originally, when I was told, I wasn't supposed to put any windows facing the church's side. So that's why there was no windows.
Speaking of windows, also on the back?
Yes.
On the ground floor?
Yes.
There's a door, but no window?
Well, you have the kitchen with a door going out of it, and then the pantry, which is a washer and dryer in the back half of it. And a half bath, you know, right in that part. When you open up the front door, the house is going to be open from front to back. On the right-hand side, there's going to be one door, which is a half bath. Behind the half bath, there's going to be a washer dryer, and then a pantry. So if I was to put a window in there, it would be maybe where a pantry would be, and you'd have shelving in there to put your food in because the house is only fourteen feet wide. So you don't have much cabinet space in the kitchen to begin with when you divide it in half and put a bathroom in there and a washer and dryer. And then if you have a walk-in pantry, if I was to put a window, there goes your shelving.
Jack, did you see the, the planning firm's report?
The, from the engineer?
Yeah, with the, under the architectural comments, there was a number of.
Yes.
Of what's, what are your feeling about that? Because I, I, I agree with a lot of the comments they have in there, and it's related to the design of the building. It is kind of an awkward design.
The design of it is, you know, the house is only fourteen feet wide, it's going to be a hip roof. And then when you're looking at the front of it, it's going to be hip going back, and then an A dying back. So inside that A in the front, you're going to have the shed roof of the, of the porch down below. And then above, you're going to have a double window with a circle top on top of it, which when you're inside the bedroom is a funnel. And then the, you'll have a tray box on all four walls, and ten-foot-high ceiling in there. So I mean, it would be pretty unique from the inside, but like, like you're saying, from the outside, you can only make the pitch of the roof so high. If I make it a twelve one twelve, you know, I'm gaining instead of the, the peak of the roof being five feet, it would be seven feet. You know, for each foot you're going up, you know, eight. You know, for each foot you're going up, you know, eight feet, you know, times 12 means, you know, you're going up by increments. So I mean, with the narrowness of the house, you're only dealing with so much that you can do with the roof. And by putting a hip roof on it, and I'm going to use a black timberline roof with gray vinyl siding on the house and wrap all the windows with a 1 by 4, which would be a basic colonial house, but not as grand as, you know, the colonials that you see. You know, be half the size of, you know, a regular colonial because it's only 14 feet wide.
It's just that, that arched window really is not architecturally accurate for that, particularly in that neighborhood. I mean, it just, it just would really stand out. It's kind of like...
Well, he, he had mentioned to put a dormer in there. And if I was to put a dormer into the bedroom, you're talking about taking up three to five feet of the bedroom because the dormer comes back into the room. So there you go. You don't, the room's only 14 by 16. And if I put a dormer into the room, you just took half the bedroom space. Unless you put a dummy dormer on top of the roof, which is the same thing what I have anyway.
Well, it's just that the proportions are not, are not right. This, this little pitched roof that you have in the front is, it's just, the proportions are really all not...
It's in, the symmetry of the pitcher, when the design is done, you'd have an eight on 12 with another eight on 12 inside of it. And then you have the circle top inside of that window. I mean, if you just want to put a hip roof on the house, all the way around the house and just be a plain Jane hip roof, that's, no, that's fine. I was just trying to make it look a little bit more desirable from the street, so when you're looking at it, it's, it looks like something.
Well, I mean, my house is that hip roof. It's pretty nice.
If I can just jump in here a little bit?
Please.
I'm referring to your comments.
If I could be sworn and then I'll jump in.
Absolutely. Do you swear upon the test when you give during these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Michael Sullivan, Coffee and Hands.
Thank you.
You know, I think that we're sort of picking away at all these little details.
Right.
I think holistically, you can see that there are, you know, nine comments here. And they're all very legitimate comments.
Right.
I think that you're working with something that is a very traditional and actually uniquely traditional composition. It's a small house, but it's got the gambrel roof. It's very unique in its own right as it is. And I think that you can be simple and a hip roof doesn't necessarily suggest that it's too plain to be, to be nice. It can be very nice, but you can't turn it into like Frankenstein. You can't take the traditional elements and then have this arch window that came out of, you know, Home Depot somewhere. You have to actually make this a holistic thing. And I, I don't think that the board should be sitting here looking at, well, maybe we'll do this or... I think you need to go back and look at all of these and see how you can accommodate all of these. And it may not be that you want a higher pitch. You don't want to do the doors. There's some options in here. But I think this is a, this is a package here that you need to look at and some of these are just materials and things. But I think some of these elements that are prominent, the composition of the building, that window becomes the thing, right? When you stick it out front. I think you really need to rethink that. I think that's what the board's saying. We'd be happy to, to work with you on that, but...
Right now, you have...
If that's what the board wants.
You have the double window is there right now in the front of the house. It's existing as you see on...
So it's on the arch top.
On top of, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the thing, the thing with the current design is that you have this gambrel roof. And so we have a double window. You also have this architectural detail that kind of surrounds it. It's not just a big rectangular space. Whereas this, it's a, now you have a much larger space with just this window right in the center with this kind of, you know, arch over the top of it. Just, it, the proportions just seem to be really off on the whole design of that upper floor.
I think it's a, I think it's a good idea to add that discussion with, you know, the, our planners have offered to work with you to work through this.
And just, and just so you know, I mean, in our office, we have architects who specialize in historic preservation and other things. So it's not going to be me trying to...
No, no, right.
To do it. It'll be somebody who's a professional talking.
I think there's an opportunity here to do something that could be really special.
I, I mean, I don't have any problem. If you want me to take out the circle top on top of the window and make it a double window, so be it. That's no problem for me. I was just making it a better view. I've been waiting for the, this board meeting for over eight months and I'd like to get started with the construction of the house and, you know, move forward. And I, I mean, I don't want to go for another review and push this thing back to January or something. I mean, if you want me to change something, I'll change it. It's not a problem. I just want to move forward.
Then I think that there are quite a few of these things that we would like changed. Because we're talking about, we're not only talking about a window. We're talking about adding windows on the side. We're adding, we're talking about lattice underneath the front porch. We're talking about casing for new windows on the front facade.
Well, is it possible that we go through each one and just...
Yeah, why don't we go through them?
Give them a yes or no?
We could, and that's fine. And however you want to proceed is fine. I just, you know, the reason I suggested get together is because when we say corner boards, well, that's a fairly simple thing. But if we talk about like the, the windows and dormers and things like that and you, and your architect starts to say, or you start to say, well, here's how the inside's configured. Here's why I want it like that, then you say, oh, well, if you want to do that, it's more than just do this or do that.
No, I mean, I've done it for a living for the last 35, 56 years old, so I've been doing it since I've been 18 years old. I mean, I do the houses in my sleep at night. And like I say, if you want me to take the circle top out, take it out. If you want me to add a window in the bedroom, I'll add a bit window in the bedroom.
All right, so let's, let's go through each one then.
Whatever you want, go down the list and I'll change it.
Let's go through each one then.
Go ahead.
The applicant should use corner boards.
That's not a problem. I was going to do that anyway. It just wasn't in the drawing. Sorry about that.
Are you going to be using vinyl siding?
Yes.
Then we should use, actually, I'm assuming that you have this report that...
Page four.
Yes, we're on page four. All right, if it's used, the applicant should use smooth texture, texture vinyl instead of vinyl that imitates the texture of wood.
What page you on?
Page four.
Four.
Okay, page four, line A, B, C, or D. What is it?
We're on B.
B.
What are you on?
B.
Okay, B.
Smooth vinyl.
No problem.
Okay. Fiber, fiberglass shingle roof should be dimensional, similar to GAF manufactured Timberline series.
That's what's going on, the black timberline roof.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. The arch top window is inappropriate for the wood frame structure as it is historically used in a bearing wall structures such as masonry.
Take it out.
So the question about that, so the width of this double window, is it the same width as the existing double window that's there?
Yes.
Okay, it's hard to tell from the proportions.
Yeah, I was going to say...
It's the same window, just with a circle top on top of it.
I was going to say D and E are related and if, it sounds like the dormer is not a good option for you. I, I would say that at a minimum, we would put back the double window, kind of like what...
Yeah, what exists.
Well, I, I was, what you're asking for is to put the double window without the circle top. And take off, take off the line of the roof, just make it a straight line across.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine. Arch top window out. Take out the roof line on front and back of the house.
Right, we're on F. The casing for the new windows should be front, in the front facade should be similar to the existing front window and door trim.
1 by 4 trim around all windows and doors of the house.
Uh, this is F.
No, I, I know what you're saying.
Okay.
It's just, it's a, it's a padding and then it's, it's white around the windows, so it's a little bit thicker and then you have the vinyl siding butts up to it.
So is that a yes?
Say that again?
With, I'm sorry. Jack's just trying to get it with E, when he removes the arch top window, then that little pad roof goes away and it just becomes a straight...
Straight line across.
Right. So that's WC will comply.
You'd have a hip roof around the whole house. No inlay inside the hip itself.
So what about the casing for the new windows?
1 by 4 casing around all windows and doors of the house.
Okay, so you're good with that.
Right, that's fine.
Okay. Second floor facade, we need windows on the second floor facade. Consider windows at the top of the second floor stairs and in the bedrooms.
2046 windows in each bedroom. That's a narrow window, 2046. Upstairs, you usually use a 46. Downstairs, you use a 52. And in the stair hall coming upstairs, what do you want, a circle window in the stair hall at the top?
What do you think is...
All right, or do you want just a little square window?
Square.
Just a square because...
The geometry unified.
Yes, everything's square.
Can I ask how far the setback is? You're talking about the west side?
Yeah, the west side is one foot, a foot and a half.
Because the construction department isn't going to...
To allow what?
You need a certain amount of, you need a minimum of three feet for a window on that side.
Because of egress.
That's why I had no window.
Building code. I can't speak for the building department, but you need a minimum of three feet for a window.
So is that, is that the window that's on the...
There's no windows on the west side. That's the windows we're talking about.
There's no windows on either side of the second floor.
Right, but if you go on the east side, that's where the closets are. On the west side is where the stairs come up. So you've got to have a three, you have to have three foot for a landing. Then you come over three foot and you have to have a door and then you have to have your closet. So I don't have the room on the east side to put a window if you have a bed there sitting on the east, on the east wall.
It's like you have a warehouse on the second floor.
I would have put windows on the west side, but like Barbara's saying...
The closets are interior adjacent to the bathroom, so I don't understand how you, I mean, you... One, with two blank walls on the east and west and then...
Because you're utilizing the space. If you, if you were to use the closets on either the east wall or west wall, then you have no room to put a bed. Where do you put the bed? Underneath the window?
Could, even just a, you know, a half window, kind of a, I don't know what that's called, but a, it's a little wider, narrow...
Like clear story windows?
Thank, yeah, trans, not a trans...
Like clear story, they're at the top.
Yes. You gotta swear me on you.
Swear me.
You're getting a little out of control with them. Do you swear? Do you, how many years? I've lost. I don't really swear. Tell the truth, tell the truth, and nothing but the truth. Barbara Van Wacker, Sony Officer, Assistant City Planner. The windows have to meet building code, especially for the, for the bedrooms. So you can just say that the windows will meet building code. You can't say that they're little windows because when he gets to the building department and then when he tries to get a CO, the code enforcement will knock him down, code construction department will knock him down. So if you want to just make it simple...
I think that's fair.
A fire, a fireman has to go be able to go in and out of the window.
But they must meet code and Jack generally puts that in the resolutions anyway.
That's, that's fair. We're good with that.
So I wouldn't spend too much time trying to design the windows.
Well, that's why we're saying the windows on the west wall, that you're trying to put that window in the corner, doesn't meet code because it's only a foot and a half from the property.
The west side, you're not going to be able to get windows.
That's where we're talking about.
The other side, you'd have to meet whatever building and code enforcement requirements for a building, for a bedroom.
So it seems like at least one of those walls got that windows.
What's a shame is that you can't do, if you can't do windows, is there something you could do with the facade in terms of introducing some sort of fenestration?
Like a vertical element or something?
Right, a vertical board or something that breaks it up. It doesn't look...
I can't imagine being in a bedroom with no windows.
Who wants to stay in a room with no windows?
The, the roof that's on there now is a mansard roof and there's no windows on that house. And when a mansard roof comes in, it leans in about a foot, foot and a half, so it's taking a foot and a half of the space. So right now, instead of having 14 feet, you only have 10 feet. Because that roof leans in, so you just lost four feet of bedroom space. I'm trying to give someone as much bedroom space as they can. I mean, a 14 by 16 bedroom with a two-foot by seven-foot closet's a pretty nice sized bedroom with, especially with a 10-foot tray ceiling inside of it.
I mean, is it a reasonable request to just have a condition that says the applicant will make an attempt to incorporate windows on the east facade on the second floor that meet code?
Meet code is a three-foot, 3046 window. You have to, a fireman has to be able to get in the window, so it's got to be a minimum of three feet wide.
How about a skylight instead? Why can't you have, I mean, okay, so if I'm looking at the house, this is...
I could put skylights on the west side, west side of the house, two on the roof in each one side of the bedrooms.
You just don't need the legal egress window.
I have two in front. The double windows in the front are the egress windows. Well, that's what I'm saying. I have the egress windows in the front. If they want me to put a two-foot by four-foot-six window on the west wall within the one and a half foot... Huh? That's what I'm saying. On the west side, I can't put a window.
Which side, so if I'm looking at the house...
Yeah.
The front porch, which side is the west? Is the...
The west side faces the church.
So the...
The stair hall side. If you're looking at the floor pan, the stair hall side where the stairs come up is the west side.
Okay, so the house is actually this way. Yeah, because he said the stairway's on the west. That's west. So the front porch is over here.
The front porch is on the...
If you're looking at the front of the house...
The north side.
The right side is the west side.
Right, yes.
I mean, I'll do it...
So if you put a, just some kind of a window at the top of the stairs, does that, because I mean, I see houses all over the city that have these smaller like stairwell windows.
I can't answer for the construction department. That's why I'm saying you just need to put in something.
Well, you just said that would be like a three feet.
I mean, obviously an egress window, you can't put windows because the proximity to the house...
But if it's not an egress window, it's like an ornamental window. Is that, is that such a thing as an ornamental window versus an egress window?
I don't know. You'd have to check up. You have to check with the building department.
There, there is no...
But I don't...
I know, building next door, the church is...
It doesn't matter. It's...
It's the property, I know. So that's why we're saying the property line on the west side is one foot, one and a half feet from that property line. So I, that's why that wall is blank. I would, I would have put windows in, but I was told from the very beginning, I can't put windows on that wall.
But what about the skylights?
If you want to put a skylight in the roof, I can put a skylight in the roof.
Yeah, but you'd have light coming in.
Well, I think it's more the architectural style of the building, not considering light coming in. Because I mean, it'll get light now.
That was one of the reasons I had the circle top in the front, so they have more light coming in that room into a tray ceiling.
Well, they're not allowed to have it here. It's not allowed because they're not far enough away.
I mean, if you want me to put a 2046 on the east side in the corner... It's two feet wide by four foot six in height. That's the window.
Oh, okay.
Two feet wide by four, four foot six. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. What happens if you just reverse everything and then put windows on the east side?
Easier said than done. The stairs and everything, the existing part of the house are all on the west side. Everything is set up on the west side. The porch is on the east side. The stairs going up are on the east side. If I was to reverse everything, would be a great idea, but everything is set up the opposite with the existing house. I'm not taking down...
So I have a question.
Go ahead.
In, in the report, it refers to a window at the top of the stairs. So that would be on the west side, which is less than three feet from the property line.
Right, can't do it.
So, right, unless, unless it's not an egress window, is there, is there some, can we state that as some kind of accommodation?
On the west side, egress or not egress, you can't put any windows because it's a foot and a half from the...
It doesn't matter.
The property line, doesn't matter. That's why I didn't put any windows.
The one on the east side, is a possible bedroom window?
I mean, if you want me to put a window on the east side in the corner of each one and put a small window in the corner of each side, I can. And put a transom above the tub on the east side, that's fine. I, I mean, I don't have a problem putting a, the tub is going to be sitting sideways, so I mean, I could put a, a one-foot by five-foot transom on top of the tub. And then you could put two, two-foot by 2046 windows in the corners of the bedroom. You know, it's just going to be tighter when you have a bed. You're going to have a bed with the dresser sitting underneath the window. No, I'm, I'm thinking more down the line with somebody when they're putting the furniture in the room, not thinking of the outside, what the outside is going to look like. I mean, not too many people really look at the sides of the house. They only look at the front of the house when you come by the house. That was why I had put the E in the front and put the circle top windows that it had, you know, some girth to it.
Yeah, I, I think the challenge with this property is that there isn't a building on the east side. So I, I would suggest that we, that we make it a condition to try and accommodate... to try and accommodate windows on the east side, second floor if possible, that meet code. That, that's just.
Two, two oh four sixes in the corners and a, and a one foot by five foot transom above the tub.
As long as it meets code.
Yes.
See, the thing is like with your existing gambrel roof, that design prohibits windows on that side, but now you're creating this, you know, huge rectangular wall that's just blank.
No, I, I understand, but you're.
I understand, I understand where you're coming from, but it needs to be something that's a little bit more reflective of that kind of architectural style.
You're dealing with a bowling alley that I'm trying to make an open floor plan to it to, you know, make it look like something.
All right, so Jack, that's why I think that that's where we're, we're landing, is to put windows on the east side.
East side.
Meet code.
East side.
East side, east side.
So the east side is going to add three windows. Transom and two windows.
Right, thank you. That meet code, yes.
Okay.
Okay, ladder should be used under the front porch and rear deck to prevent debris and animals?
Not a problem.
Okay. Middle porch column should be centered below the second floor window.
I have no idea why it has that. I mean, the, it's fourteen feet wide, the second floor window is going to sit right in the dead center, so the post is going to be seven feet in the center, you got three feet. So the stairs are going to be three feet coming up, so you're going to have three feet and seven feet on one side. Doesn't matter, the, the post is usually in the center from the stair hall to the corner.
You understand that your architectural plans don't show the center?
Right, yeah, the post is offset from the middle.
You should have copied your, your application.
I don't have it on.
Yep. So that's what we're asking for.
You want the post.
It should line up.
You want the post in the center of the deck?
Which, I mean, it should line up, the center, you're saying the, the windows upstairs are going to be centered, right?
Yeah, it's in the center.
So the post should be centered as well, so those should line up.
That's fine, not a problem.
Right, if it's, right, if it doesn't show it on the plan, it should, because it, that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, because I mean, it doesn't show that on the plan, it shows that it's offset.
Right, it shows that it's offset. Okay, now. Okay, um.
Is that a yes or no?
The columns are yes, they want it in the center.
I like the light, I think the light's nice.
The what?
I like the light, I think it's very nice.
All right, what about the, we haven't gone through, Michael, the, the street tree and the parking?
Yeah, just, just a recommendation, it should be a street tree.
One tree in the front of the house, not a problem.
But simply, like, does that get approved on like a tree commission or whatever?
Right, it should be, it should be a, um.
It's usually a baby oak that you put in, a baby oak tree, you know, like roughly five feet high, three, four feet high.
No, no.
Besides, according to what the shade tree.
Right, the environmental shade tree commission should be contacted.
What, oak in the front?
Well, before you.
Whatever the shade tree.
Whatever, I, I mean, I'm, whatever tree you want me to put up, put in. It's not a big.
It may not be feasible to put a shade tree in there because the space between the curb and the sidewalk may be too small.
That's, that's the way I don't have a tree in there.
Commission would be able to tell us that.
Exactly.
Okay.
There's no dimension here, I can't tell what the, the, that distance is.
From, from the deck to the sidewalks, eight feet max.
No, I'm talking about between curb and sidewalk. The sidewalk.
Oh, the curb and sidewalk is that far? That's all it is. They just put random curbing and sidewalk down. It's like that.
That may not be.
You may not be able to.
May not be feasible.
Yeah, you can't do it. And a matter of fact, the, the township, they put the curbing for a driveway. It's not even on my property, it's on the church's property. It's in the wrong place.
All right, next. We have parking.
So is the tree requirement eliminated?
They'll find, well, if it can't fit, I think the environmental shade tree commission will tell us it's not.
They'll determine.
They'll determine if it's.
Two parking lots on the street in front of the house.
Sorry?
In front of the house, there's two street, two parking spaces in front of the house? That's why I'm saying to you, the driveway that the township put in, when they put the new curbing in, is not even on my property, it's on the church's property.
Okay, so then we're, so you're asking us for, to agree to that?
Waiver, yeah.
Yeah, for the waiver for that.
Yeah, there's, there's no place to put for.
Struggling with what the waivers are. Air conditioner.
It's too close, the air conditioner is over within five feet of the property line.
I can put the air conditioner on the east side of the house. You got seven feet on the east side of the house.
So, so you're going to move it so it complies, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it has to be five feet.
Yep.
Yeah, so if I put on the east side of the house, you have plenty of room.
Okay.
Okay.
Everything is going to be on the east side of the house anyway. The electric that's existing there, once they run the new panel box up in the sec, on the, down from the second story where you can see it on the corner of the house here, that'll be on the east side. The gas is right there where the hot water heater will be in the basement will be on the east side. I can put the air conditioner back in the left hand corner of the east side of the house.
Could we just, uh, do we typically request screening from the street with that?
I'm sorry?
Screening from the street?
Of what?
Of the air conditioning unit.
Or is it far, far, far back enough?
Depends on where it's going to be located.
It's all the way in the back of the house.
Okay.
It's not going to be anywhere near the front, it's going to be all the way to the back corner of the house.
You need stairs from the parking lot.
No, okay. All right, what else are we, what else are we looking for here? It looks like you're, you're changing the, you're proposing a new porch?
Adding a porch on the back of the house.
And that would require a variance? Would that be true?
No, I don't think.
No?
He's adding a porch.
Well, you're adding a porch, so it's, so it's not a, it's not a, you know, a non-conformance, or is it?
You're looking at the setbacks.
Yes, I'm looking at the setbacks.
A porch needs a minimum of six feet.
And do we have it?
How far is the setback?
Right, it says the standard is six feet, it looks like.
They don't have.
Four, there is none.
They don't have it right now, though.
Right, they don't have it right now, but we're, we're expanding that by four to five feet.
Michael, this chart on page two indicates that there's a rear yard.
Rear yard or about the side yard?
It says.
Does he have six foot?
Says side yard.
Side yard. Side yard, the new porch has a four and a half foot side yard, so that's an existing, uh, not before we be exact, because it's got surveyed, it's existing.
And we're, when we're expanding that.
Yes.
Okay.
So there's a variance for that.
It's hard for me to see where that is, because I'm, I'm only seeing the front. Where's this side yard that we can see? The porch on the side yard, yes? Yeah? So that's the backyard?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's the backyard?
Right.
Yep, not the side.
I mean, the front looks like the back, you just have to know which side you're looking at. Like I said, it's a fourteen by forty-five bowling alley.
Okay, okay. All right, what else are we looking for here?
Uh, I would, anything from the engineering side that we need to?
Anything we should be concerned about, that you're concerned about?
Will there be any new utility connections?
The existing utility connection will be all brand new, put on the side of the house. The, the electric right now is off.
Will there be any underground utilities that can go to the street?
It's going to be exact same way you see it right now, except you're going to have a, a riser pole will come down the side of the house, the second story to exactly where the box is now.
So no trenching in the right of way?
No, no trenching.
We encourage you to contact the city engineer for discussing any sanitary sewer connection fees that might be required.
The sewer that's there is into the basement of the house, and I would just be using it from the neck that's coming into the foundation and go right off of that. I'm not going to be digging anything up.
And how about overflow for the downspouts of the roof?
You have, they wanted me to put drains on the, on the diagrams there, which they did put on, and the, the water is going to go to the back of the house, on both sides of the house, when the gutters go around.
Is there a way to direct it out to the right of way?
Uh, in order to direct it out to the right of way of the street, I would have to dig a trench and then bring it out through the ground out that way. Then I would have to bring the water to the front of the house, and I would be bringing it out to the street. And I think by bringing it to the street, if there is a heavy rain and I'm bringing more water to the street, you might get a flood, so if, at least if I have it going to the backyard, I got it going away from the street.
Well, the concern there is just neighboring property.
Right.
You can take, you can take the back of the drain when it comes down into the ground and maybe go five or ten feet and dri, do a dry well, put some stone down in the bottom of it, and do a perforated pipe and put it down into the ground, so when the water does come off the roof, it would seep into the ground.
I'd certainly rather have that, because we don't want to impact the neighbors.
I don't have a problem doing that. You know, I just, I, I, I can do it to the street, and I can do it to the backyard. Whatever you want me to do, I'll do. I'm, I'm agreeing with what you guys want, I'm not arguing with you.
Which do you think is, which do you think is a, a better choice in this situation?
I mean, if you're talking about a dry well, then you're also introducing the need for like soils information and the design of that dry well, which.
We'll bring the gutters to the front of the house, and we'll put a little pipe from the front of the house into the curbing out on the street, and it'll drain out to the outer street, so there's going to, there's going to be two drains on one on each side of the house going out to the street. Unless you want it to come all the way around, go one drain, pitch all the way around, come one drain, one hole out.
Two drains would be better.
Two drains is fine.
I think that the curb, if you replace the curb, you can put the pipe through the curb, the curb needs to be saw cut.
Yeah, no, what they would do, a, um, you have a special hole that, that will put, I'm not going to break that curb, it's a brand new. You put a four inch hole into the curb, and then you just put the sleeve through the curb. No problem.
I prefer if we didn't cut the curb, um, how about like if the pop-up drain out by the street in the right of way, is that possible? Because if you're, if you're cutting the curb, you're installing, let's say, a four inch pipe through the curb, it just leads to wear and tear of that curb over time.
What do you, what are you suggesting you want me to do?
A pop-up drain out in the right of way. So that pipe it out of the right of way, and then with enough water pressure, the stormwater spills out into the thing.
So you're saying you want the pipe to be above the ground, and then just go out into the gr, out into the.
Be piped underground until it gets into the right of way, and there'll be a pop-up drain there, that it can escape into the right of way.
I'm, I'm not getting what you're saying. You're saying that you want this pipe to go underground and then come out just short of the street, and then have a perforated head on it, so it leaches out into the, the ground above?
It'll, it'll, it'll daylight straight up.
Okay.
And be able to cascade over the curb and into the right of way.
I mean, if that's what you're suggesting, I don't have a problem doing that, but the whole problem is when that water gets, what's the pressure going to pull, push it up? Because the water's going to be coming down, and it's going to fill up, and it's going to come out to that pipe head, and it's only going to have a four inch head, and say that head is six inches below the ground. What's going to push the water up out of that pipe to leach out?
All the water in the downspouts.
I mean, I, I don't have a problem doing it, but I just, I think that the water would back up into the top of the house.
You could buy it, it'll, all you have to do is install it, it's made specifically for that purpose.
Not a problem, I'll do it. Pop-up drain spout.
So it's between the curb and, and the sidewalk is where that pop-up drain is at? And are they reliable, or do they get jammed up and quit working after six months?
What's that?
Where the tree was going to go.
I will take that instead of the tree.
It's going to be a bonsai tree.
Uh, that was number seven in the engineering.
There is the possibility of, if a lot of leaves get in there and it gets, can get clogged.
Needs to be cleaned.
With proper maintenance and what I'm expecting, if, if it's not working properly, it would be obvious.
Have snow on it, and then you have a rainstorm.
Right now, there's no.
It's not going to work, right? You're going to have to clear it.
Well, I got rid of all the trees, so we don't have to worry about the leaves. So we eliminated that problem.
If you guys would prefer that it went out through the curb, we could do that. I would just ask that the curb be reinforced above the opening. Just so that it prevents cracking and that frame.
I think that that's, not that I'm an engineer, but it just seems more reasonable, because who's going to maintain it? And I don't think that the person that owns the property is going to maintain, whatever, I mean, though I think it's a great idea, but I just don't see that other people are going to maintain that.
The other issue you have to remember is the street. Everybody's water's going to be running down the street, so if your drain is there, and they're got paper garbage or whatever, it's going to clog my drain up too. So you have, it works both ways. His way works, your way works. It's just a matter of what's on the other end clogging it up.
I think, I think we should go with the, with the way that you're suggesting, that it goes in the curb. Through the curb.
Through the curb, alright.
All right.
And then how do you reinforce the curb?
I should put, you'd have to cut the curb, saw cut it, and put some kind of wire reinforcement to go, like, in the new concrete.
If, if we use the saw, a special, you know, four inch, where you're cutting right through it, and it just goes right through, it'll be clean cut through it, where you're cracking nothing, and I'm, if I'm coming, bringing it down towards the bottom of the street, I think they dropped the street on Washington Avenue a good ten, twelve inches from what it used to be. So I mean, you do have a good.
Six inch curb?
Yeah, you do have a pretty, pretty good curb on Washington Avenue compared to what it used to be.
So if you cut four inches out of it, you're only left.
Two inches on the top. I, I mean, you, you want to what, put some?
We need, we need it to be reinforced. I, I don't think that we can decide how it gets reinforced, but if we could put it in the conditions that.
Rebar the top, wire mesh in the concrete above.
Does it have to be four inches to hold? Why can't it be three?
It can be three, but normally the drainage is taking a four inch pipe when you're coming out the drain. Not the three inch.
It would have to be ran, the calculations would have to be done, a three inch pipe would be sufficient.
I think it could.
It can be a three inch pipe, I mean, you just put a reducer on once it comes down out of the drain. I mean, you know, the drains are taking a four inch pipe, you know, you go over a reducer coming down from four inch to three inch. Correct. So stay with, stay with the four inch and then reinforce. Fine? Not a problem. Okay, anything else?
All right, any, any other questions from the board?
I've been calling back and forth to Florida all summer, doing a big five thousand square foot house down in Brigetown.
Do they open for a motion to open for a public comment?
Second.
Anybody from the public? All right.
Motion to close, public, public comment.
Second.
Okay.
I move that we approve this application with the conditions that were identified herein, which include, from the planner's report, number two dot five, A through I, agreement to all those conditions, and, um, also moving the air con, the AC unit to the east side, and putting a drain through the curb on the front of the house.
The deck on the back of the house, we approved that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's part of it.
Part of the approval.
Part of the approval.
The side yard variance is required for that.
Yes.
Just want to make sure, I don't want to put a deck on the back of the house and then say it wasn't approved for that.
Air conditioner goes to the rear?
To the rear, east rear side, east rear for the air conditioner.
There's no variance required for the air conditioner.
Correct.
Has to change.
All right. All right, that's what, I second that motion.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor John Moore? Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Sony Carillo?
Yes.
Trudy Seifach?
Yes.
Alexis Taylor?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Barbara Prizak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know the church is going to be so happy.
They want to buy it ready.
All right, I, I.
Buy it or buy it, one of the.
All right, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a request at this point. We know that, that we still, it's, we're sitting here at nine thirty, we still have two more applications. I'd like to, um, make a motion to carry the Lutz Enterprises LLC to the next meeting, so that we can give some time to ABG, which is next. If the applicant. If the applicant is agreeable. Sorry, no, I, no, I, I don't think anything's quick.
This is pretty straightforward.
No, well, we have ABG first. It's up to you guys.
Fifteen minutes, if I'm not done in fifteen minutes, then you can send me home. I'm fast.
Alright, well, do ABG, alright, then we'll do ABG first. Then you'll.
She's like, huh.
If I may, Andrew Carrish from the firm Bob Swartzell, on behalf of the applicant, I will be as quick in as we did at the end. Property we're talking about is 527 West Ave, block 3105, block 5, otherwise known as the Asbury Festol and Beer Garden. We previously obtained site plan approval back in 2013. Before that, there's a plan amendment which was granted on 87, 2013, which allowed for second floor heating and heating settlements after premises. Before that, it only left first floor. As a result of that, we left a plan in board, we got site plan approval for the beer garden. There are three conditions I just wanted to bring to the board's attention before we get started with your garden approval. Condition 18 of the original resolution that does not allow for any light spillage onto adjacent properties. Number 19 allows for live music, but must cease no later than 10 o'clock in the rooftop. And number 20, that will exterior lights, receptional safety lights shall be extinguished when the facility is closed. The reason I bring that up is that it pertains to the existing, or any proposed, application here tonight. The reason that we're here tonight is because the applicant seeks to amend the prior site plans to allow some accessory uses on the rooftop, including a Christmas market and some other ancillary uses that we will go through. This time I'll call Jennifer Lambert to testify.
Please answer your hand. Do you solemnly swear in burning testimony during these proceedings? Would you dispute the whole change in that agreement?
Yes, I do. Jennifer Lambert, I should probably get a microphone. Jennifer Lambert, sorry, I have vocal issues.
So Lambert, what is your relationship with your partner?
I'm the majority partner.
You have knowledge and you're fully familiar with prior application and also with prior specifications here tonight.
Yes.
Um, why don't you go briefly, what areas that you're looking to do, or if there are changes that are accessory that you'd like to utilize, the premises.
Um, well, some of them are things that I have been doing for the past four years. And then I figured we're meeting, so I'll just tell you all my other crazy ideas, um, so that we don't have to go through this again. Um, the one that's the most timely is the Christmas market. It's our fourth annual Vinox Mark or Kris Krindl Mark, which is a traditional, uh, German, uh, part of German culture, um, often in town centers, at beer gardens, um, outside festivals, always, they all involve craft vendors and glue line and food vendors and things like that. So, uh, it's the Christmas market. Um, the next thing that we do to.
Before we move on from that, is there something that you ordinarily find in your, um, associated food and drink, or at least markets or Christmas?
Yes, in fact, it's become a very big American tradition now as well.
So that is customary, we'll refine accessory to the use of the beer garden.
Correct.
Alright, go on.
Um, so then the next timely one would be, um, the igloos that we've been doing now for three years, which are basically just really cool bubbles at a lot of restaurants in Manhattan and Chicago and all over Europe, actually. German-made product, have these igloos that you, some people make them into lounges. I just put our big giant beer garden tables in them and you sit and eat and drink. It's really nothing other than being smart about using an outdoor space that otherwise would be sitting there with snow on it.
So it's just a matter of utilizing the rooftop by having these igloos, but it's for the purpose of drinking and eating.
Yes.
Okay, and then what, how many are proposed on?
Uh, we do 12.
Go on.
Um, and then, I don't, can I see my list? And I'll just rattle it down.
Spring market.
Uh, spring market, I've always wanted to do, um, it's basically my fest, which is the German celebration of spring. And I thought a great way to do that would be just to utilize the same, uh, temporary structures that we use for our Christmas market and do something fun and spring-like decorated like Europe with maypoles and lots of flowers. Um, and the farmer's market underneath that is kind of the same thing. I'd wanna be able to open it up to local farmers. It's not like, uh, I'm just listing, just listing, um.
Culture, that's something that you'd find in Europe, associated food and drink.
Yes.
Type of beer garden, right?
Yes. Um, the rooftop yoga, we've also been doing for the past several years. I was told it'd be smart to put it on here. It's four hours a year, guys, and it's sponsored by Reka Vodka. It's part of their programming that they do. It's the cleanest water in the world and then they mix it with kombucha and, and they mix it from Freehold or homemade elixirs and things like that. And they're, it's supposed to be this healthy drinking kind of thing and people really love coming to the roof. We don't charge for it. I'm not a yoga studio. It's just something that's part of a, a programming for a liquor sponsor that people have really responded to. Um, haunted rooftop activities, we just make a little graveyard out of the lower deck. It's nothing big and let people scare people. Um, so I've just put in things. We've been doing beer runs and our races. They're all charity-based.
You don't run into beer garden.
No. Sponsored, we start, start and finish at beer garden. Mm-hmm. Rooftop movies, I just really wanna show beer fest on the roof and, you know, give out Das Boot. You know, I wanna be able to do little things like that on the roof. Not very often. I don't need to do it very often. It's just kind of a nice thing to do on a slower nights, maybe here and there.
But in compliance with the requirement, you wouldn't go cashing in.
Um, and the seasonal carnivals and boardwalk games, I don't mean like carousels and stuff like that. I just have a nonprofit group that does work for fulfill in Spring Lake. Um, and they have all these boardwalk games and things and I've wanted to be able to utilize them on the roof to let like toy drive or different charities come in. We can set them up and it brings people to my roof and it lets the charities make some money. That's all it is. I'm just putting it on there 'cause I don't, you know, wanna come back with it. And we wanna do family pride this year, or for pride weekend. Nobody does a celebration in town for families for pride. So that's what we've decided with Ratt Radio and I thought that might be a fun thing to do. So that's, but that is, and, um, music festivals, I just put it on there 'cause it just means I'd do a longer music programming. Maybe a local music, I usually do more unplugged stuff on the roof, but something where I do more music over the course of a weekend. Again, not after 10:00 PM at night.
And in recognition of the conclusion of prior resolution where you can't have volume music after 10:00.
Yeah, I usually stop by 9:15 anyhow.
Going back to the market that you have, the Christmas market, how many separate units are there for that market?
There are 18 tents.
And you provided documentation for the package. I can submit it, given for the measurements of the tents and all sorts of that.
Yes, correct.
And that's consistent with what you want, yeah, but in the past, you wanted to continue with the future, right?
Yes.
In terms of the height of those tents, what is the peak?
I, I made a mistake on my, my application. Um, the sides go to eight and the peak is at 11.
Okay, and the top of the rooftop over the bar is?
A little over 10 feet.
So this would be just about a foot over the existing rooftop on that bar, correct?
Yes, and not higher than the fencing for the utility, the mechanicals.
And the roof, the height of the roof up to that top portion over the bar is around 37 feet, or so, do you approve plans, correct?
From the ground?
Correct.
I believe so.
And the permitted height in that area is 60 feet, am I correct?
Uh, you would know that one.
So you're not anywhere, you're not anywhere close to approaching or going beyond where it's permitted, yeah, that's a provision, correct?
Correct.
And the, those tents would be within that roof area, they would include any additional coverage beyond that roof, am I correct?
Correct.
Same with vehicles, am I correct?
Correct.
So you don't have to worry that any of all areas of that.
No.
Correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Now, there's a couple of letters that came in from the board professionals that I wanted to improve. The first one is from the board engineer date November 21, 2018, and it would be marked as.
Uh, which one of our exhibits, make it be one.
Looking at B1 for identification, it's an engineering review, date November 21, 2018. First comment in there is with regard to any new connections that are going to be required. You're not doing any new connections, any new, like, new.
No.
Correct? Also no sanitary sewer connections, am I correct?
Correct.
No trench within the city, right, am I correct?
Correct.
Um, in terms of the usage with these tents, so those tents are gonna be, that's where tables were, am I correct?
Two tables per tent, pretty, pretty much.
And so you're not gonna be able to have seating where those tents are, am I correct?
Correct.
Is there gonna be any increased intensity of the use by having those tents versus people sitting in those things?
Uh, less, 'cause you can't, you don't know where to put them.
So people will not be sitting there, so it's a less intensive use of the roof by having those tents there, am I correct?
Correct.
And how many days over the course of the holiday season can you have the Christmas market?
Uh, typically it's four weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. This year, there's a fifth weekend because of when Thanksgiving fell early.
So we're talking about a total of 15 days over the course of the holiday season, am I correct?
Yes, max.
Hours that are going to be, uh?
Fridays, five to nine, Saturday and Sunday, 12 to seven. Sunday, we end early 'cause nobody comes after six.
And what type of vendors are there?
Um, I was, this year was really exciting. Very many Asbury Park vendors, but otherwise all handcrafted local vendor, vendors. Um, a lot of people doing some import items, including we import some of our own handmade ornaments from Europe, hand-blown glass ornaments.
Now, in number two of the engineering report, it talks about any additional, you have a park, there is no parking outside, correct?
No.
And you have bicycle racks there, but we're talking about the.
I have three bicycle racks and people still use them in the winter.
Um, any additional lighting being proposed? What's to talk about the lighting?
Uh, each tent has a light in it.
Within the enclosed.
Within the enclosed area, plus there's lots of Christmas lights, lots of Christmas lights.
Does that lighting extend beyond the rooftops? Limited rooftop, so there's no spillage?
No spillage, there's a tarp on the back.
So that is, that is in accordance with the existing resolution that was obtained, am I correct?
Correct.
Going down to the planners' report, I'm gonna mark that as B2 for identification. Date November 26, 2018, and I'll see that today. Going through a few of the comments in here, going to page three of six, talks about the rooftop structure, indicates that 16 tents has unspecified number of igloos, but they're gonna be 12 igloos, that's what we're thinking, am I correct?
Correct, 12, there's no space for more.
Now, the igloos, do you keep them over the course of the entire winter?
Yeah, we put them up for New Year's Eve and then we take them down right before St. Patty's Day.
There's also mentioned in the planners' report about a stage, you have a stage under the rooftop?
No, I have a platform that we built, um, because our 18-foot umbrellas, those giant umbrellas that we use in the summer, were getting really ruined in the winter and they're very expensive. So we just built a platform that would hold all of the, um, umbrellas under it. And it typically through the summer has tables on it, but if we do have a musician on Sunday sometimes down there, then we take the tables off and put them up there and use it that way. People like to request the platform just for their own little parties. Well, it's two to three tables, depending on how many people are gonna be there.
Now, in terms of the igloos, are they attached to the floor? How is it that?
Um, they're attached with electro, I, I think I'm using the right term, electrical conduit, um, braces. You know, the ones that like screw, bolt screw, um, to the deck, which is what is recommended by the company. If you look through it, included the whole brochure. It's kind of interesting. Um, but that's what they recommend that you use to secure, um, that or sandbags if you're not on, something you can screw into.
Okay, looking through the package that you provided to the board, there's an entire section on the garden, am I correct?
Correct.
What I'm gonna do is identify that as A1 for identification, just so we have that identified, mastered, provided for the board, am I correct?
Yes.
I previously made mention of the information provided with regard to the tents for the market. I'm gonna identify that as A2, am I correct of that? And it says for it also the layout of where all those tents are.
Correct.
That's all the questions I have these weeks.
Yes, sir.
For the igloo, uh, it says, do they stay warm in winter? Just wanted to verify that there's no kind of external heating component that's gonna be in there?
We put little electric heaters. The fire department came the first year and said it was fine. They're little, like, little fireplaces and they have a Bluetooth speaker in them.
It's not an open fire, correct?
No, it's a little electric, yes, I said fireplace. You know, those little Home Depot ones that look like fireplace, but they're not.
So I, I know that a lot of the questions that, that, the way that you were directing questions really had to do with the, the Christmas market. Do all those same answers apply to all the rest? Because that's what I'm concerned about, is that I know that some of the concerns that we had from the engineers' report were very specific. He said for the Christmas market, for the Christmas market. What about all these other uses? Is there any, do any of the things that the engineer supplied apply, that's an issue?
No.
That, that, that all comply? Are they the same?
Yeah, just, that's exactly. The tents for the Christmas market, are they gonna be used for any of the other uses?
I would use the same tents for the spring market or the farmer's market. That's what they would be used for.
And what is the period of time that you would run to sense the farmer's market?
Uh, probably do it for like a three or four weekends again, but we haven't really gotten that far yet. The Earth Day, the huge Earth Day festival, they'd like to use the, um, the tents with surf rider. So it'd probably start right around the time that they, around the Earth Day time period and go for a week or two with kicking off with the Earth Day festival that I do every year.
And what about the, like, the, I see you have rooftop movies, music festivals. What, what, what are we talking about? When we're saying rooftop movies, where would you do that?
I'm trying to convince Carter to let me hang a tarp off the slot building.
Okay, so that, that's, that, that's a perhaps?
Yeah, those are.
But it's something that you're thinking about?
Yeah, I put things on there 'cause I'm always coming up with ideas.
As always, we're concerned about the, you know, the, how safe things are, how loud things are, that type of, that type of a concept.
Light spillage.
Like light spillage, that's what we're, that, those are the kind of things that we're concerned about, obviously.
And the farmer's market?
The farmer's market is just part of the spring market. Making sure people understand, I'm gonna invite local farms to come and sell their product at the spring market.
So the farmer's market would, would happen in conjunction with the spring market, it's not a separate market that you're.
Yeah, I mean, maybe one weekend they would say, hey, these are all local farmers, these are all local crafters, these are all Earth Day people, but doing spring market kind of festival like that, whether or not each weekend has a theme, whether or not it's all mixed in for the whole length of the spring market, hasn't been determined yet. We haven't figured out the programming, but I've had.
You're talking about a limited time, just one market over that period?
Correct, not eight weeks of spring market and eight, or four weeks of spring market and four weeks of farmer's market, no. I, I have about a month in there where it makes sense to drive some business to the roof before my tables start filling up. So it keeps people employed, it brings in extra revenue in the slower times gearing up for the summer.
And is this, is this rooftop yoga at like seven in the morning or is this like?
No, it's Monday nights at 7:00 PM for an hour.
It's Monday nights at 7:00 PM, alright.
Brings about 120 people, it's free, they love it.
Alright, so.
They'll probably come to city council meetings if you say no.
No, well, obviously we're concerned about the length of time, or how early in the morning we're, just as much as how late at night. We're concerned about both.
Did you say that the use of the rooftop for a yoga class of any type is customary and accessory used to the rest? The testimony I was providing is, it's sponsored by?
By Reka Vodka. And, and I'll just say one other thing on that. If you start looking around, it happens all over the country. There's a whole trend of beer and yoga, wine and yoga, drinks and yoga, all over beers, restaurants, bars, breweries in town, all over the place.
I'm not a yoga person, so.
It's cold.
Did you say that out loud?
I know, right? Alright, hit the timer.
Alright.
And, and just real quick, the, um, the carnival and boardwalk games, you said would only be in conjunction really with a charity of some kind? We're not charging for?
No, I'm not gonna turn it to seaside, just for charity and like, you know, special things. Cause they, this, you know, I know the people that have them in Spring Lake and said I could use them.
I, I think, you know, if the board's amenable, I think as, you know, we should probably put conditions on all these uses if we do approve in, in terms of a maximum number of tents, a maximum number of igloos.
I can't fit any more than I asked for, so it's fine.
Okay.
How long, how long does it take to set up and, and strike an igloo?
An igloo?
Yeah.
About, once you know what you're doing, if you look at the directions, takes about. About, once you know what you're doing, if you look at the directions, takes about twenty to thirty minutes per igloo. But what, they have wind ratings and everything, so I watch the wind constantly. And the, taking the top off, because the structure can stay in a windstorm, because the wind just goes through it, taking the top off is ten minutes, if that. You know, we just, and we have a big team, we just go out, do it, bring it in, we, we've been through it now for several years.
And fire drills, no, I'm glad to hear that, just because I think like if a big nor'easter were to come, anything above thirty miles per hour, you'd wanna know exactly how much in advance we need to?
We made the mistake once of missing it years ago and we won't do it ever again, because they're, they're not, they're not cheap and, uh, so.
And, and this might be a question to our professionals, um, when these things are set up, these tents or, or the igloos or whatnot, who makes sure that they're set up safely?
Oh, no, I was pointing at Jack because he was written.
No, no, before he said anything.
You swear affirm the testimony you give during this application will be the truth, the whole truth, then nothing but the truth.
Yes, Michael Sullivan, planning board planner, Clarky. I was just gonna point out the construction code office would have to review any connections or anything.
The answer is no one.
Well, well, may I, may I, you, first year that I've done all of these things, I was visited by the building department, I was visited by the fire department, I was visited by the police department. So that's not true, if, so, if there's a process that should be put in place annually, sure, every year I fire a per, a fire permit with Garrett, every year. It reminds me when I forget, so that's not necessarily true, if there's a process. Absolutely.
No, the, the answer is the building department does not require a permit, so the answer is.
Okay, so, so no one checks it for safety?
I'm just saying that.
No, I understand.
A permit is not required for this, right, it's not required for this, but Garrett comes by for your overall.
I was visited by everybody in year one, Garrett regularly.
But it never, i- it's not necessarily during the Christmas market, it's not necessarily during igloo time, it's just for your whole.
No, Garrett visits me every time I do something unusual and I file a fire permit, application and I get a permit. Every year that I do the igloos and every year that I do the tents and I pay, and I was late this year, so it cost me a hundred and eight dollars instead of fifty-four.
Okay, so you do have to do that.
I don't, with the fire I do, but I check in with everybody, but yes, with fire I do, Garrett requires it, I do it every year for everything I do, October first ten, igloos, tents on the roof.
All right, can I ask just a really simple question here, I, and maybe, I just need to understand why, why do we, why are we asking for this? Is there something, what is not allowed? Obviously, there's a reason why you've come to us with all these requests to be able to do this. Now, is it that in the CBD, we're not allowed to do these things? Is that, is that what it is?
Under the CBD, the, gotta keep in mind, CBD is set up in Taverance Districts, this is the lake out residential district.
Correct.
Originally, when we wanted to do the beer garden, we had to come in for a plan amendment because they allow residential up top first for eating and drinking establishments. We had to then get the plan amendment to allow for eating and drinking up top, but it doesn't allow for retail. While down the street it does, in different areas within the CBD, they allow for retail or for other uses. These use would be permitted throughout the area in the CBD, but not just within this.
Not in this area?
Exactly.
Where the beer garden is, okay.
A block, oh, I didn't, not even.
Agreed, but still.
So the position we're taking is when you look at culturally, historically with regard to beer gardens, with regards to the markets and all, it's an accessory to, it's incidental to, seeing as part of the culture of the beer garden. And the testimony for the witness, since that means other uses also would be accessory to, incidental to, when you look at the CBD plant, it allows accessory use that are incidental to the principal use.
But, but the, the, the question you're asking is the reason that it's not defined is because it's not defined. That's why you're, that's why they're here.
They, they.
Because, because it says, use, it doesn't say.
Because it's an incidental use, it states incidental and.
It says exactly this, uses that are incidental and accessory to a principal permitted use.
Doesn't really define what those uses are.
It doesn't really define what incidental uses are.
Right.
So, so, so the first, the first step, but I don't wanna get into Jack's territory here, but the first, the first step is, is, is what they're doing a permitted principal use, yes, unquestionably. So now let's look at the, um, accessory uses, and that's why we listed them this way, here are all the uses, and we put in there, clearly, i- i- in our opinion, music is something that's widely accepted, not just in Asbury Park, but in many places with respect to an accessory use in a place where you eat or drink. Happens all the time, they've had a stage in there, obviously somebody said it was okay, they've had performances, that seems like a fairly easy, um, conclusion. But when you get to markets and things like that, it may be that that's a German thing, but that's not something, is that something that's well established in Asbury Park or within the United States? As a customary and incidental use to a bar or a restaurant, having a market?
Regardless of what the restaurant is?
I'm just saying, as a general proposition, before you even get there, as a general proposition, and then there may be other elements that say, oh yeah, if you're gonna, if that's the theme, that's, you know, that's, that could be it. Movies and things like that, lots of bars have games, you know, darts, you know, you, you know, lots of bars will have a game, in the summertime will have like, you know, bean bags also or whatever it is, and maybe jarts if you were around when they had those, but, um.
Hatchet throwing.
Right, now, now it's hatchet throwing, right? So, so there's all these things, but, you know, some of these I think are not too hard of a stretch to get there, particularly in this location. But, you know, some may not be, I agree wholeheartedly from my perspective that anything, you know, a shelter, it's sheltering a place where you're eating or drinking. Like the igloos or the tents, if that was something where you're eating or drinking, I don't think there's any question, that's a part of the accessory use, that's actually part of the principal use. It's your principal use is eating and drinking. So it's really, as you, as you knock past the ones that are fairly obvious and you get into where, you know, his own market. You know, some places, you know, Stone Pony sells, sells T-shirts and Asbury League sells T-shirts and.
Porta has markets.
Right, um, so, so they'll sell things that are promoting themselves, you know, so you do see some of that retail associated with places and bars and restaurants. Does that mean you have a full-fledged Christmas, I, I don't, that, that's really where you're at, and that's really an interpretation, you know, you're in a place of interpretation.
If we, the problem with the whole application, you know, from a legal perspective, is that accessory uses are typically defined in the references in this, these are not clearly defined. So we have to go to the next step, which is, all right, what, are they customary and incidental to the principal use that's permitted on the property? You don't wanna go too far in thinking about whether or not they are, because then it becomes a matter of interpretation, and if it becomes a matter of interpretation, we're going to go wrong board, so we don't wanna go there. If you wanna, the idea literally the applicant is characterized, I think that these are clearly accessory and incidental uses to restaurants this type, throughout the world and throughout the country, not necessarily around here, but they're, they're that way. It's up to you to decide, agree with her or not, uh, and that A, that's A, if you do agree with her, that's fine, invoke conditions and go home. If you don't agree with her, then vote against and go home, but if you, I don't wanna, if you get into that third area, which is gray area, where you're really not sure, uh, your gut reaction is not that essential, then it's his own program, and that doesn't, you know, that's where you go.
I, I think the challenge is, it's not like we have five beer gardens with outdoor space in Asbury Park to compare to, we only, we only have the one. Um, but I will say that I've been to Birmingham, U K and, and Germany, you do see Christmas markets associated with beer gardens all the time. And regarding the rooftop uses, I think there is actually precedence for that in Asbury Park, in the Asbury Hotel, I mean, they do have rooftop movies and rooftop yoga, so.
It, it's, it's true, but also, it's also when you, when you see some of the other places here in Asbury Park that, that their markets are opening up all over. I mean, I'm seeing them in the papers and, and Porta's having one now, they, I, with the Asbury, uh, the Asbury Hotel's having one.
That's a different zone.
I understand it's a different zone, but it's not unusual, it's not something that's unusual. I don't know.
If you accept the witness's testimony, it seems to be, uh, speaking witness, but the witness is characterized, this is customary and accessory and incidental to this type of operation throughout other parts of the world where there are beer gardens. But the retail uses, uh, to drink.
I had no problem with the testimony and I agree with it, the only problem I might have is should we put time breaks? It's more time breaks as far as, I believe Jen, Jen sells, the next owner says, screw you, I can have a festival twelve times a year.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
I don't have a problem with that because they're, they're targeted, exactly, I mean, it's just like when I go to the city for any events and say this is when I wanna do it. I can tell you exactly when I do it every year, the spring I haven't chosen, but about, around Earth Day is when I've wanted to.
No, you, you were honest with us saying like, it's gonna be five weeks this year in zone four.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you give us like from Thanksgiving to this for Christmas and from here to the spring.
I open Black Friday to the day before Christmas Eve, because nobody comes on Christmas Eve.
But just to be clear, the nature of the use has nothing to do with the timeline, it's not, we're not.
It'd be a condition of.
You're, you're talking about a condition of your site plan for, or your site plan amendment, it's not, it has nothing to do with whether or not you would think that this was customary.
Well, yes and no, because the testimony is that these markets are temporary, they're not permitted. So part of it is that when you see these as, uh, as testimony, and that they're not a year-round permanent fixture, that the customer uses of these types of markets are around certain events.
So that's the interpretation that the board's being asked, that they're temporary markets?
A hundred percent.
Are customary and incidental, but not permanent markets?
Performance with a testimony.
Just trying to, trying to sort that myself.
Trust me, I want tables with people drinking beer in the summer.
So if we approve this, are we setting a precedent so that anybody else coming in says, you know, I have, I have a rooftop and I wanna have, um?
Markets.
I don't, I don't know that it's limited to a rooftop, it's not limited to a rooftop. It's not limited to a rooftop. Christmas.
The prudent thing, let, 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 let's cut to the chase, the prudent thing here is deal with the application as it now stands, ultimately to protect the city, so that you don't have an avalanche of applications where everybody, yours is great, and I, I never voiced my personal opinion, yours is a great idea, you get a great to go, all right? But from a legal perspective, I think differently, I think, oh, in order to have floodgates not open, you would wanna amend your ordinance to start defining your accessory uses so that you can control it and you don't have somebody else coming, I'm sorry, I can't see.
No, no, that's, that's my concern, that's my concern.
So I, I think, yeah, here and now we deal with this, it, it's before us, but in the future, I really do think that, uh.
So do we should do like a plan amendment to?
And that's what, that's what I think, I mean frankly, we thought, we thought there was a, a little bit of a groundswell to amend the plan before you came in. We thought that that was gonna happen, we've actually been talking with Michael Capobianco and, and the planning office about.
Should I'm just being introduced to?
So we, so we recommend that it, we looked at so that we don't go through this every time, because there's no reason that other businesses should have to go through sort of this.
Yeah, it's kinda foolish.
And it's historically accurate because from day one with all the redevelopment plans since I've been here, it's always been an evolutionary process. Because you can't anticipate every set of events and, and facts before you for twenty twenty two. So, actually, one of the things that makes Asbury Park unique is that they recognize, they don't just stick to the existing zone and this is it, it's not permitted. Asbury Park recognizes that, listen, there are things that you may not have thought about in enacting new ordinances, redevelopment plans, zoning, that now is proper to include in there, um, unfortunately, not a lot of towns have that same belief, but Asbury Park is very progressive and recognize different uses, accommodating for that, looking at what's beneficial for the city.
It's, it's very important because we are still seasonal and to these kinds of things, especially when I do them, are to keep my employees going and to bring revenue in. You know, I know I caused a parking problem on Black Friday with my gift card sale, so that's awesome, you know, so to be able to generate business in town in the off-season, you gotta be creative.
I don't think it's an unrealistic request either, because to be year-round, you have to be creative, things that bring people in.
Nine thousand square foot roof deck, that otherwise could have snowball fights, shall we put that on there?
Might I offer to, I guess, appease kind of both issues, could we do a temp, like a, like we'll give these approvals for these uses for a one-year period? With the intent that we amend the?
But it's the who's the we, who brings it to us to amend?
Well, I can't, we just, can't we take it upon ourselves to amend the zoning ordinance to define the uses, I mean, has that?
Now.
Well, here's what I would recommend, I, I, I would, I would suggest that focus on this application.
Yeah.
Get that done.
Yeah.
As part of this, um, or subsequent to it, recommend that the governing body initiate, um, an examination of the, of the redevelopment plan to consider whether or not these particular accessory uses, and there may be others that they wanna consider, uh, should be, uh, legalized, uh, or specifically legalized within the, within the redevelopment plan.
Or beyond that, the entire city is seeing that there are other premises that are doing it now also.
Yeah, but, but specifically this.
But we can, we can, we can take it upon ourselves to introduce that.
You, no, no, you, you can make a recommendation to the governing body to, to take a look at it.
Have you, have you take a look, ask the council's permission?
Right, you could forward, forward a copy of the resolution saying, here's what we decided, we recommend you take a look at the CBD redevelopment plan to consider whether or not these should be permitted.
But then, but then what, what I'm also concerned about is that, like what John said about timing, meaning, meaning that, that what happens, if something happens here and you say, okay, I'm done, somebody else buys it and they don't adhere to all these rules?
I think she said she'll agree to anything.
No, no, she, she does.
First of all, I'm not planning on selling the restaurant.
No, I'm just saying, but.
That's enforcement, that's like any other resolution. So we can put conditions of approval that, that would hopefully safeguard against any of the such.
Condition of approval.
Well, have length of time for each, for each specific use.
As opposed to this is approved for a year, or this is approved for that, or, or, for the length, length of time that you own, or what? That's what I'm concerned, I'm, I'm not as concerned in, to be honest, about the, about the timing of the event. I'm more concerned that we're saying, okay, and then you go away, let's just say, you go away, somebody else buys it and they take this on and they say, you know what, I'm not gonna adhere to any of, any of the timing.
But that's like any resolution, that they have to, it's enforcement, if they go beyond the scope of what's permitted by resolution, we shut them down.
Well, that's why we're here, because I was unknowingly beyond my scope, but at the same time, I can assure you that the money that is made on the roof by selling beer and filling tables far supersedes what I'm doing to try and bring income in with these other things. The igloos only hold one hundred and twenty people and you can't use them in the summer, you'd roast. The Christmas market and the spring market make no sense to do in July, it's, it's only to bring in income in the slower times when we're gearing up.
So, so what kind, so what kind of timing are we looking at for these things, are we looking to put a timing to say, everything from this time of day to that time of day? Are we looking to say, all right, Christmas market can only be during this time?
No, I, I think.
And spring market's only this?
The Christmas market is from the Friday before Thanksgiving up until Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve, I, I do Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we were talking, been doing one Monday night for industry people, but we haven't decided to do that. I can outline exactly when and how I do everything.
For that, I think that that, we should put that in, that's easy, to the resolution?
Yeah, well, I, I think in all fairness to the scripter of this resolution, we tried to do this in anticipation of this evening. There's gonna be a lot that has to be put in here in terms of each one of these, if you have it in your head, but hopefully we're gonna have to have a warning.
Yeah, I'll read it out.
I'm, I'm, when given to us, I doubt I'm gonna be able to do this resolution to properly this evening, to be adopted this evening, just doubt, I mean, it is too. Yeah, I get, I get, I think it's too much.
Can we give her a timer, just to get Christmas?
Well, you can vote, you can vote tonight on it and, or, and, and then have a back with the conditions of a write-up, what her needs are, what she needs, which one of these items are. And I can, I can still have a resolution done in time for the ten.
Jack?
Yes.
Could we do a, a resolution for the Christmas market and get that out of the way and then work on the rest later?
Sure, I can omit numbers two to eleven, because evening's.
Sure, I can omit numbers two to eleven for this evening's purposes and then come back and give us a short synopsis at the next meeting.
Right, because, because the igloos aren't going up until after the tenth.
Yes, the igloos, I take the tents down, uh, the twenty-sixth and then the igloos go up, um, by New Year's Eve.
Okay, so the tenth would still work?
Yes.
But, but I think, I think that there's a distinction here. There's a distinction between the things that are temporary, like the markets and the igloos, which.
Are.
Temporary.
Are part of the principal use already.
They're part of the principal.
Right.
They're part of the principal use.
So, we don't have to worry about that.
And, and music, and music, you know, just because you call it a festival, you have music on two floors doesn't make it not permitted.
Self-qualified recreational.
I, I was, I was adjusting because it was in the letter that I received.
But I, but I think you should distinguish those things that are just flat-out accessory uses in your opinion with those that are temporary accessory uses.
Okay.
I'm, I'm saying it for the board, I'm not.
Yeah.
But I think that some of that's.
For any help, I can get for this.
Yeah, I'm looking at this, the accessory uses, I, Christmas market, the spring farmers, which highly want.
Spring. Yoga.
Yoga. I think the rest of this stuff is consistent with the principal use.
Yeah, the only thing you would want to add some conditions in on the rooftop movies, you don't want to have it.
I, I, I'm, I'm.
Mm-hmm. Because of the, the, the Asbury Hotel, we, we discussed those roof, the use of that rooftop for movies at length.
You can limit it, I really am not gonna do it very often at all.
We're gonna hear from you, what you think the limitations are, you, you need.
Okay, I'll talk, yeah, it's, it would be a couple of movies a year if that, I'll, you know, I'll.
Two months a month.
Oh, man, at most.
Yeah, let's focus on today.
I'll, I'll come up with something with my team.
Yeah, no, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so we can, to be honest, when we go with, it most imminent is the Christmas market, correct?
Let's go with the.
The Christmas market and the igloos.
Right.
So that you're taken care of until after New Year's.
Igloos are.
I appreciate that.
Motion open for public comment.
Second.
Motion to close.
Motion to close public comment.
Second.
I, I just have a comment that you was talking about hanging something for the movies. You don't have to do that because they have those actual blow-up movie screens.
Oh, I know, it just would look really cool, but they do.
Yeah, I would.
So, there's no variances involving the applications, just a pure site plan.
Thank you.
Actually, yeah, and the testimony was that the existing building height is thirty-seven feet and the highest structure that you're talking about adding for the markets would be eleven feet above that. So, your total would be forty-eight feet.
Actually, no, it's thirty-seven up until the top of the barns.
No.
So, this is only a foot above that.
Right.
Thirty.
Eight, thirty-eight feet.
Thirty-eight.
So, it's thirty-eight feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay, so just both, and that's the highest, you'd be the highest.
The roof over the barn.
The top.
It's thirty-seven, thirty-seven.
Okay. It's thirty-eight feet.
So, then, assuming it's gonna go forward this evening, it would be a memorialization of two, uh, two items at this point. Christmas market and the igloos, if the igloos are necessary, we have to not consider it accessory, consider it permitted as part of the permitted use.
Well.
Can't hurt, if I give it to them, I mean, I'll give it to both?
I think, I think we should do both.
All right.
Because those are the most critical right now.
And I'll take that reference.
The others, we can get your input. So, the resolution would only be the two.
Yeah, the, the igloos are really a site plan issue, not a usage. That's, that's my.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Okay. I move to approve resolution for igloos under Christmas market.
How often do you get to say that?
As part of the site plan. Not often.
Second.
All right, you pick who the second one.
Like this first.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Yes.
Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Mike Manzella.
Yes.
Tony Perillo.
Yes.
Trudy Syfax.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Barbara Prizak.
Yes.
Yay.
I assume the most of that will be this memorialization.
What's the market open?
Uh, this weekend.
Correct?
Right.
Yes.
Yes, so, and the second was a further resolution for the other crisis.
And then for the other, I'm.
Right, we need that too.
I, you guys are busy next one, because there's a lot of matters on it.
Whenever you want, you want to go back to some.
I'm here anyway.
Come back, whatever.
It should be five minutes.
Yeah, as long as you provide the schedule, we'll, we'll do it.
Yeah, I give to an advance.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, do we have to vote on that the second resolution is for everything else or we're okay?
Well, we'll carry the rest of it until December tenth without flipping or any motion without further notice.
Okay.
Move to carry the remaining accessory uses to December tenth without further notice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Do you guys want to hang here or let them finish their?
Yes.
Hang on, we have, uh, let's, come on in.
They've been here all night, we have to let them.
Come on down.
Come on down.
Be so inconsiderate.
You may, all right, we need just two minutes, please. Two minutes, two minutes. The record, Michael Manzella is recused from this application. Okay.
I know, I'm, I'm sorry.
Start the timer, oh, no, not yet, wait till we start.
All right, are we ready to, uh, oh, no, wait a minute, mic's recused, Jack's back?
All right.
All right, let's go. Yeah, we didn't shut down, so. Okay.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, good evening. My name is Richard Tilton, I'm an attorney from Allenhurst, New Jersey. I'm here this evening with Mark Lutz, the application, or the applicant is Lutz Enterprises LLC. Uh, the property is known as seventeen oh six dash seventeen oh eight Fourth Avenue. It's block two zero one one, lot three. The parcel currently consists of eleven thousand two hundred and forty-seven square feet. It's improved with a, a single-family residence and a detached garage, which are situated to the west of the property. Uh, before you is the subdivision, minor subdivision plans prepared by Herbert McDonald dated eight twenty-five, uh, two thousand eighteen. Uh, consisting of three sheets. Uh, the notice, I know the notices have been submitted to Mr. Serpico and to the board.
I think I should be keeping that there.
I guess so, I think.
The board of jurisdiction, so you can continue.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea, sorry for that part, thank you. The applicant essentially just seeks minor subdivision approval to just cut the lot exactly in half. That's what this application is about. It's gonna, we're gonna create two lots, both of them are five thousand six hundred and twenty-three square feet. So, they're about six hundred square feet above what's required of in the R-one zone. There is one variance that will be created. And when we put the new lot line down, it comes to about two feet away from the existing garage. The garage could be arguably, the garage could be moved, the lot line could be moved. There's really, to, you know, in the applicant's position, there's really no reason to do that. The garage is at the rear of the property, the property is on Third Avenue, all have garages in the rear. So, it's really a de minimis, a de minimis request. There's one other existing, um, variance that it, it will not be exacerbated in any manner. The, um, side yard setback from neighboring lot two to the west is two point five two feet off of the property line. But nothing is proposed on that side of the parcel. The new lot three B is, uh, it will be built with a single-family house, consistent with the size that's there now. There may have been some confusion when you look at this, at the plans that were prepared. The building envelope may have been misinterpreted as the footprint of the proposed house. We don't propose a, a house with a two thousand square foot first floor. That's just showing the setbacks, the front yard, the side yard and the rear yard setbacks.
So, where you hatch that in, like, because it's got a hatch line on it, like it's an existing building.
Right.
But that's not the case.
Not the case, that's just the, that's just the, the building envelope. So, when Mr. Lutz, when Lutz Enterprises goes to file for a building permit, the proposed plans will meet the, um, building coverage and the FAR.
So, the proposed lot three B, three B.
Yes.
It will be fully conforming.
It will be fully conforming.
Except, except. Except for nothing.
Except for nothing. There's no, actually, there are no variances associated with new, uh, lot three B. The, we've reviewed, and actually, if I could just have Mr. Lutz's one.
Yeah, well, so I want Michael Swan to, I want him down, his chart, just to make sure what variance is of.
Okay. Yes.
Mark Lutz.
And Mr. Lutz, you're the principal of Lutz Enterprises LLC.
Yes.
And you heard, uh, my explanation of the application, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and everything was accurate?
Yes, correct.
Okay, just real quick for the board, um, so lot, new lot three B, there's, we showed the building envelope with all the setbacks. You're gonna, you're, I guess someday, someday down the road, you'll put a house on that.
Proposed house would be all the requirements, all the setbacks.
Okay, and it will be consistent in size and.
Every, every aspect.
Well, like the neighborhood, and it'll be like a nice Mark Lutz house, right?
Yeah, it'll be a nice house.
Thank you, okay. And then there was a question about the existing masonry wall on the existing residence and that's gonna be, it's totally contained.
Contained to the existing one.
Okay, so it does not approach upon new lot three B, is that correct?
No, no.
All right, now, new lot three B, there was a comment about a shade tubing out in the, in the street area. Are you gonna be, in the future, you'll be able to configure a driveway so that it gets around that tree?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and then there were some questions in, I guess, if we look at the engineer's report at the letter of November twenty-first, twenty eighteen. You've gone through this report with me, right?
Yes.
And you're able to comply with all of the requirements in, in the, in this report, is that right?
Yes, no problem.
Okay, now, there was some questions in the report about whether or not you're going to need to disturb the right-of-way for utilities in the future. If you could just explain that.
Yes, we will, we'll need sewer and water.
And you'll comply with all of the, all of the requirements of the city, is that right?
Yes, the electric service comes from the rear.
And, uh, there's no new retaining walls that are proposed for this lot, is that right?
No.
Okay, and if there are, if they're over three feet, then you'll obviously come back for a variance.
Yes.
Okay. All of the downspouts for the rainwater runoff, you'll, you'll.
They all go down the existing driveway now.
Okay, and, um, just a point of information, we proposed to perfect the subdivision if we're successful by filing subdivision D. I think there was a question about that. I don't know if there was any other direct questions that, that aren't answered, but we, the applicant can comply with all of the requirements of your November twenty-first letter.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if that's the testimony, then, um, I'm good with it.
Now, I'm sorry.
Just need to add like some additional detailing and utility connections as per the report.
Yeah, I saw all of that stuff, we'll have the engineer, obviously, for, you know, resolution compliance, he can add almost all the stuff, looks like it's completely doable. Okay. Yes, the plan is report, we gave testimony and we're basically looking for a C-two, it's a flexible C variance. Again, this, the, the garage is there, it's a nice garage, it's consistent with the existing house. It's located to the rear of the property and it really is a de minimis, uh, variance request. And we, there are other ways for us to work around that, but we just chose to, to make two perfectly sized lots.
Can we go through?
So, let's see, one would be a good criteria as well.
One was yours.
Yes, yes. And the only other variance is just, it's a pre-existing variance, it's for this side yard setback of the existing residence. It's there, it's two point five three feet off of the, um, property line where six feet's required.
It's, it's not changing.
It's not changing, we're not exacerbating it all.
Right. So, the only new variance, if I can summarize what you've.
Hang on, Mike.
Oh, I can't.
Do you swear a firm testimony during this application will be to treat the whole tube as happened?
Yes, Michael Sullivan, Clark Gate, his group, um, getting to, to Jack's point, just to, to get clarity on this. The side yard setback for lot three was an existing condition which is not being changed.
Correct.
And then the only change condition is the new side yard setback to the garage at two point one hundred feet on lot three A.
It's actually one point nine seven feet.
One point nine seven feet?
Yes.
But it's the same condition we were just talking about.
Correct. And that's it.
So, those are the only two left from that chart.
All right, from the chart, I'm sorry, I, I didn't follow that.
I'm sorry, I.
That's okay, the bit, so I'm just looking at the chart that we're looking at right now for, for building coverage. It says that three B, no, does not comply.
I, I would, so here's what I would do, is even simplify this and just don't even look at three B.
Okay.
Put your hand over three B and just look at three A.
Okay.
And that will tell you that the existing side yard setback is an existing non-conformity.
Yes.
Which can be ratified through this application.
Right.
And that the setback for the garage is being changed from fifty-one point five feet to one point nine seven feet. I added a two point one three, one point nine seven feet. And that's a new condition because of the new lot line between.
Okay, and so we shouldn't look at three B because three B is not in front of us?
They, the way the plans were drawn, it looked like a building.
Okay.
But it was just them depicting the building envelope.
Okay. Okay, so we're just looking at pretty much the side yard.
For, for the garage.
For the garage, okay. Any questions from the, um, time board?
You save the trade.
Yes.
Save the trade.
Save the trade and retaining wall is gonna stay where it is, less than two feet.
Correct.
A little bit under two feet.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, fantastic, I'm happy.
Any, any questions, I would like to move to open, uh, public comment?
Second.
Second. Anyone?
Motion to close.
Second. Second. Okay, a motion to, um, move to approve.
Move to approve. Move to approve the, uh, variant, side yard variance for the garage, maintaining, saving the tree that's what the driveway is and something with the retaining wall. Well, the retaining wall, they had, they could increase it up to three feet, but just keep it the way it is now.
It's existing.
Okay, so we won't have to do anything.
Yeah, it's existing.
There's just the tree and the side yard variance.
And the side yard. I second it. Mayor. Okay. Mayor John Moore's.
He's second, correct.
Oh, he already seconded it, okay.
So, Rick Lambert, for the blue, and John second.
Correct.
Got it.
Councilwoman Yvonne Clayton.
Yes.
Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Mike Manzella, oh, no, Mike Manzella is for the record refused. Tony Perillo.
Yes.
Trudy Syfax. Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
Barbara Prizak. Yes. Jim Henry.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for waiting, thank you for waiting.
Thank you for stating.
God bless you.
There's, um, okay, here we go, oh, we have resolutions. Oh, hey, guys, before you forget, um, somebody make a motion to second the rest of the minutes, you can do that. Okay, we have, uh, the approval of minutes for the October twenty-second meeting.
I know everyone wants to leave, real quick, two minor changes, uh, as soon as I find them. Somebody's name was spelled wrong. Or no, uh, uh, the attendance.
The attendance?
The, the attendance, it wasn't, uh, Michael Sullivan, it was Dan Halvin.
Oh, okay.
From CCH. And then, uh, you just spelled Jeffrey Hastings' name, first name wrong, but that's not a, it's G O, G E O F F R E Y.
I've got, I've got two, uh, comments. On the first page, uh, somebody testified that the Board of Education was the owner, but later on it was, uh, testimony was that it was not, the board was not the owner.
They, they lease it, yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The board leases the site. It's, they don't own the site.
Rosaze, Rosaze. And on, uh, page two, from the bottom, it's about the sixth lineup where it starts with Dan.
Sixty-six?
Yes. What's the, uh, after employees, what's that?
Hard. It's supposed to be hard.
Hard to know which form.
H A R D.
Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes with those changes.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Okay, we have a, uh, we have two resolutions.
We already did?
Yep.
We did, but we didn't do both, did we?
Yeah. Five twenty.
Okay, well, then we're done.
The first one with the, uh, at the end of the case and Alexis, after I spoke to her, was inclusive, like, both the act of the board and the memorialization.
Yeah, I, I came, I came up to Jack in between to, 'cause I wasn't sure. I think her motion excluded the resolution.
Yeah, Alexis.
Yeah.
All right.
Motion.
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming and for staying and to get through this ambitious agenda. Uh, I'd like to really thank you guys. Thank you.
I have one question. The referral to the desire, you can really have to be the answer to that.